Good, so we will get as far as we can by, ooh.
Oh geez.
I'm magnified. All right. It is, I'm not used to being audio in the room, too. Not a problem, but, um, all right, so. I'm ready for us to rock and roll. Is Zoom all set? Great. We all good to go? Silence means yes. All right. All right. Right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Monday, February 10th, 2025 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We are here in beautiful Town Hall, upstairs in the meeting room. If you want to join us tonight, you can come on down. We have friendly faces in the audience already. You can also, I'm assuming if you're watching us on Facebook or on public access, if you want to join in, you can always go to the town website, use the agenda, and get the Zoom link from there, and join us via Zoom. Now, this meeting is, of course, being recorded, as we do every meeting, so now you know. That is everything I believe we were required to say, and looking forward to a meeting tonight. With that, if someone wants to lead us in the pledge before we get going, that's great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay. Before we get, I'm just going to let everyone know that we're going to push as far as we can through the agenda until about 6:30. At 6:30, we do have a guest joining us to help the planning board with some upcoming bylaws, and so we'll shift to that and then get back to the A and R's public hearings, wherever else we are with that. Okay. Is there any public comment? If you're on Zoom, you can always go ahead and use that hand raise feature to let us know you want to speak. Seeing none? All righty. Chair and Directors' reports.
Mr. Chair, I really have nothing this evening. I talked a little bit about the zoning workshops, but you've covered it. We have a guest. She is Katie Page from DCR. They're the people from the state that are requesting these updates to the floodplain map, so she's going to be here by Zoom at 6:30, available to you to answer any of your questions on that state mandate.
Okay, great. Great, thank you. And for those who are here as well, what we'll do is, we'll hear from Ms. Page?
Yes.
From Ms. Page. At the time, there may be some board discussion on. We should pause the meeting, or is this just something to be aware of? What's the? Right, not a problem.
A lot of free time with their hands after the holidays are over.
It's true. I mean, three ghosts of, uh, three ghosts of Christmas past, present, future, plus Marley. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, that's exciting. Hopefully, the, uh, for those at home, the audio cut out briefly. There was a tech, an unidentified technical issue. We're assuming it won't happen again, but the wonderful folks in the AV booth are making sure it won't happen again. Um, okay. Let's go on to approval not required's A and R's, the wonderfully odd aspect of Massachusetts, and 215 Sunset Lane.
Thank you, members of the board. Greg Roy with Dulles and Roy, I'm representing the applicant this evening at 215 Sunset Lane. I think this can be pretty brief, so I'll try to do it quickly. Um, I've highlighted in blue and red on this plan, which you don't have on your copy, but we are essentially proposing a land swap between 215, which is the applicant, and 205, which is the property on the corner of Sunset Lane and Robbs Hill Road. The, um, 205 would give up the blue triangle, which is nominally 900 square feet. I didn't memorize the number, but it's something less than 1,000 square feet. Um, two, they would convey that to 215, and 215 would convey a, uh, a triangle of different shape but equal size back to 205, which is shown in red. So the land areas would stay the same. The properties are in the outlying zoning district. They require 80,000 square feet. They both will, they both have 80,000 square feet now. They have prerequisite frontage, and they will both remain with the prerequisite area and frontage after the land swap is complete. I think that's all. No new building lots being created. It's just a land swap between two building lots that currently exist.
All righty. Yeah, that, to me, that seems straightforward, but I, uh, I'm going to turn to the board and say, hey, board, what questions do we have? What comments do we have?
What was the impetus for this?
Frontage access. Um, 215 is looking to get access to their lot, and it's easier, much easier to do it through the blue triangle, uh, so we're looking to get the, and you cannot access through an easement, uh, at least that's been the zoning determination by the building commissioner. So, um, they worked through the process to get the land swap.
That doesn't sound right, but not our job.
Mr. Chair, that's kind of tiny. I can, I know and see what's going on, but do any of the board members need to see a closer look? Have the, the map brought up to you to see?
We do, uh, we do have the, the
Okay.
file in our, I mean, the file in our files. That's
Okay.
probably better words, but, um,
Okay.
but that's a good point, um, and that's worth noting in general. It's never a problem for us to ask to CC any of the documentation, especially when there's a difference or when it can be hard just to parse digitally.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
I just colored it, so it'd be easier.
No, I, I
Same plan, just color.
I super appreciate that because I was looking at the little triangles and processing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I went, oh.
Sometimes it's
I got it now.
Yeah.
All right.
So is, another question, if I may. The, the second lot, is it 205 and 215?
Correct.
215, there's, there's no, there's no building on that lot right now?
Not currently, but there is one proposed.
So, Robbs Hill.
So this, it's a big, big hill. Um, if you drive down Robbs Hill and you look up to the left as you're driving down, excuse me, if you drive down Sunset and you look up to the left, it's a pretty significant grade, so we've been working with the applicant. And, um, the best way in is through that blue tri, the triangle that we're, um, the triangle area. We looked at doing it through an easement. We asked the building commissioner. He said no, and, uh, so we're now, they've worked together, and they're, uh, they're proposing a land swap.
So the lot has the required frontage?
Yes. Today, it has it, and it does. So the frontage for, for the subject lot is on Sunset Lane. Hold on. I believe it's about 107 feet today, and we'll be expanding that because we'll be essentially adding more frontage on that, with that blue triangle that I'm showing.
Another 59.
Right.
Okay.
And then there's no issue with the frontage for 105 because it has, you know, plenty of frontage along both Sunset Lane and however you measure it, Sunset Lane or Robbs Hill.
Hundreds and hundreds of feet of frontage.
Right, yeah.
So, so this is the lot I'm thinking of. I think it is. So before, a couple years ago, that came before us, and we said, we A and R'd it, and it was
Right.
it was not accessible?
I think a previous engineer asked you to approve a shared driveway that did not split the property line. At the time, it was old rules. You didn't have your special permit process for the common driveway at the time, and you did not grant that.
Well, the shared was off of Robbs Hill Road.
That's right.
Okay.
And you didn't grant that, so.
That was the thing.
This is a reaction to that, and in a way, we're, we're looking to derive access now through the frontage.
Great.
No hard feelings.
Yep.
Want to be clear.
All right. Okay. Other questions from the board? Okay. In that instance, we could have a motion such as a motion to endorse the A and R for 215 Sunset Lane.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful.
Great.
Bang, bang, we're all set.
Come back sometime and pick it up?
Uh, we can, uh, we can sign the MyLars. We have the MyLars, right?
I believe so, and I was pulling it out.
Yeah, so we can
Up to you if you want to sign it now.
We can, I mean,
It's up to you.
Do you have a second?
I have a second, but you have a busy agenda. I'm happy to pick this up tomorrow.
Okay, then we can, then we'll do it tomorrow. That's
Thank you.
That's your process.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's, it's pretty
All right. Keep on going. Next up, the A and R for 171 Arbor Street, adjacent to 155 Arbor Street.
Good evening, Brian Marchetti, McCarty Engineering. Um, this is the property that we've, uh, been permitting with the board now for several months. So we've received our stormwater permit. We received conservation approval. We received the zoning variance, or special permit for, uh, a zoning variance, or relief from the lot wood through the building. Uh, so now we're just in the last stages here to get the lot lines approved so we can, um, start construction out there. So this, this A and R plan is the first that we need. Uh, it's the small parcel that we are taking, or 155 Arbor Street is giving to 171, um, so we can have our required frontage. Once this is signed, then the, we have the other A and R plan done, but we needed the book and page numbers of this plan in order to finalize the next plan, so we'll have the final A and R plan on, on the agenda for the next meeting, and that's the last piece we need.
Okay, great. Just in terms of what we're looking at here quickly, I, I see we've got parcel A, B, and C.
Yes.
What's going where?
So parcel A is the 17,000 square foot piece in the backside of the property. That's being transferred to John Rodenot at 155 Arbor Street, and then parcel B is the, uh, I call it sliver, that Rodenot is giving to the adjacent parcel, and that's required for us to get the required frontage, for us to do the, uh, the lot subdivision for the common driveways that we, we got approved through you guys.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments from the board? Okay. Hearing none? Can I just get a, I don't want to feel, I don't want us to feel shorted on this, but I'm not surprised either. There's no questions. But are we good for a motion? Okay. In that case, we could have a motion to approve the A and R for, sorry, to endorse, because we don't approve, approval's not required, go figure, to endorse the A and R for 171 Arbor Street.
Uh, motion to endorse A and R for 171 Arbor Street.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy.
Good.
Rock and roll.
And like I said, we'll be back at the next meeting for the last.
Yep. Uh, do you have more before us tonight, or is this it?
This is it.
Do you want us to get the MyLar signed now?
If you could, though.
Okay, that's great. Not a problem at all. And you have, uh, and the, and the date is the 10th, right?
Yes.
To, yeah. And it's clear 10. I bring this up almost every time we have an A and R, but for those watching at home, it might seem weird that we're approving something called approval not required, but what it really is, is we're not approving it. We're endorsing it. We're, there's a set of requirements that an A and R has to meet, and if it meets those, we're required to endorse it. It's very simple. You'll sometimes hear us ask questions not directly related to that. That doesn't affect whether or not we approve, but it does sometimes, and you didn't really see that tonight, but sometimes we ask questions just to make sure that the applicant isn't creating a real problem for themselves unknowingly. Uh, that's happened in the past, and that's unfortunate for everybody. So we try to be a help there. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, it is 6:17. We have, um, at 6:30, a guest coming in. We have two public hearings, but I'm betting, we're not expecting either of these to be on the real short side.
No, I would say not.
Do we want to dive into, uh, because I hate to start a public hearing, then stop. That, that's not going to help us process info.
We can talk, if you like, Mr. Chair, and pleasure the board, about the, um, ADU bylaw.
That's what I was thinking. I thought that might be a good thing to dive into briefly.
Yeah, it's a brief matter. Uh, just an update for the board. The state, once again, is throwing us a curveball and a slider, and so
Wait, since our last meeting?
Since our last meeting, when I gave you the track and I told you, this is it. Gone through it. We looked at the one from last fall that you reviewed and approved to town meeting, made all the corrections. It looks like it's good to go. It's covered everything, and then they changed the rules somewhat dramatically at the end of last week. So little bit of a rewrite, think hack and slash.
Mm-hmm.
And some of the local control is, has been gutted. For, that's the best word I could use to describe it.
We didn't have anything in the way, I, I don't want to be, but we didn't have much in the way of local control to start with in there, did we?
You know, we didn't, but we, uh, and, and this was permissible, um, up until last week, but, uh, we had a special permit requirement for an additional ADU.
For a second ADU.
For a second ADU, and some setback requirements for ADUs from lot lines, from the butters' lot lines.
Mm-hmm.
Those are gone. So now it's just back to bare bones, sort of by right.
By right, throw it up five feet from property line. People going to die in a fire. Who cares?
That's essentially where they are with, uh, and then this is, of course, the state's requirements, so anything inconsistent with that would not pass AG, the Attorney General's review. So we're a little bit, uh, shocked, but, you know, we got to look at it and talk to town council, and I don't think we have a lot of options left, but I will be giving you a revised one to reflect this latest guidance from the state, and I will still stay on track for annual town meeting, but it doesn't look like we're going to have much ability to, to keep those protections in that we had hoped for. So that's kind of the latest and not so greatest news on that. But, um, we got a month to talk about it a little bit more, um, and, and you can think about it. I mean, it, you know, there are issues here, including the board's right to express itself, and whether or not this is consistent with the interests of the town. Get that on record, but, um, in the meantime, that's what we're looking at here.
I have a couple questions about logistics and town meeting, uh, on the local level, but I don't want that to shortchange first anything we, else we have about that ADU shift, because I'm hazarding, there might be opinions or thoughts, and I don't want to cut that off by all means.
Yeah, I mean, I, this is a law that's currently effective. Didn't it go into effect February 2nd?
It's in effect right now.
Yet.
We have to accept ADU applications under this law right now.
So even though it's still evolving?
Yes. Yes.
So I think that's just a good example of how, how we have no control as a local community over that zoning change. In fact, it's, you know, it seems, and, and I think we'd need to be very clear to the public as we discuss this, you know, moving forward, that we are not amending our current bylaw. The state is stepping in and, in whole, replacing our bylaw. Is that correct?
Well, yeah.
And we were, we were hopefully going to amend their bylaw, but now they're saying we can't even do that.
Yeah, for people at home and just wondering, what is, what's all this, like, ADU stuff? What are they talking about? Um, accessory dwelling units, the ability under our zoning, you know, up until now, for you to go to the ZBA and request a special permit to add an apartment, an in-law apartment, accessory dwelling unit apartment, a, a living or dwelling unit, um, onto your existing single-family house. And so there was a process for that, and your butters were notified and so forth, so everybody was protected, and the state, you know, so surprised to anyone that, uh, they're aggressively pursuing the production of housing in any form possible, they've decided as a policy matter to bring that right into the backyard of local municipalities and their bylaws in terms of homeowners control. So, um, yeah, that, that, that is, you know, we, we had it. It was on our books. There was a process. A special permit was required. Now that's all gone. It's by right.
Now, on a technical level, we will be amending our bylaw, but it, it's worth understanding that we will be amending our bylaw to what the state requires under duress. I think it's also interesting to note, uh, and I mean interesting really as a neutral phrase, but because I, I don't like the state coming down on us, I get the need for more housing. Regardless, Lunenburg had, to my understanding, before this, one of the more permissive ADU, um, bylaws I was aware of, in that we didn't require that, um, an accessory dwelling unit, you could have an in-law, we call them in-law apartments, but that often come, that terminology comes from the idea that they were often, in many towns, approved only for relatives, and that's less of a case. I mean, now, we didn't have that requirement. We allowed it largely by right to start with. Um, all right, I do see that Ms. Page is here, so I could move us on to our next topic, unless there's others on the ADU tonight. And my question about, about, uh, annual town meeting can easily wait till later. Okay, so that is us talking in our zoning workshop about accessory dwelling units. And for those watching at home, if we're ever using a lot of terminology that you just really don't get, and you feel it's important that you do, because we throw around a lot of acronyms up here, ADUs, A and Rs, they're second nature to us, it's okay to raise your hand and say, hey, could you define that? That isn't, we want the public to get what we're talking about. All right, so I'm going to move us to our floodplain map updates. Ms. Page is here to join us, and, um, Chris, I don't know what else you want to say on it, but we're looking forward to having a better understanding of what the expectations are here, why this is going on, because we're not experts. Thankfully, we have one.
Yeah, I think that's a, a good introduction to Ms. Page. She's been great, just rolling out all this information to planning staff so that we can try and better inform you on this, but she is sort of the, um, the master of all, uh, you know, trades here on this issue, so I'll hand it over to her to explain what's going on with this.
Okay. Can you all hear me okay? Is my audio working?
Yep, perfect.
Perfect, perfect. Just wanted to make sure. I've been having audio issues earlier today. Um, anyway, my name is Katie Page. I'm a floodplain management specialist within DCR's flood hazard management program, and we are the state coordinating office of the National Flood Insurance Program in the state of Massachusetts. Um, so the reason that I have reached out to Lunenburg is that, um, you are part of the Nashville River Watershed, and FEMA is currently in the process of updating the flood insurance rate maps for the Nashville River Watershed. So if you're wondering kind of where this plays in, um, so communities, um, like Lunenburg are members, are, it's voluntary members of the National Flood Insurance Program. It's not a mandatory program, though communities, we have 351 across the state of Massachusetts that participate. There's communities across the entire country that participate, and the way that program works is that when the community joins the program, they adopt and enforce regulations, um, for those areas on the flood insurance rate maps, and then in return, flood insurance is made available to anyone in the community, property owners, renters, business owners, whether they're in the floodplain or not. So just as a little background information, Lunenburg joined the program back in 1982. That is actually the last time that you had flood insurance rate maps updated, so they're very outdated. These new maps will be much more accurate of what your 100-year floodplain actually looks like in the community. Um, but, so as part of this process, FEMA is updating the maps. Um, those maps are becoming effective in July of this year, so in July of 2025. And so in order for the community to, um, remain in good standing within the program, kind of two different things need to happen, both of your local floodplain regulations. First is that the community needs to adopt the new effective map of those dates, so that will be that July date, um, of this year versus the current date is that 1982 date. And the second thing is, um, the community needs to, um, at least adopt the minimum standards of the program, and those are all laid out in our mass model bylaw. Now, I haven't been around forever, so I don't know. There's certainly reasons why communities didn't have these already in their bylaws. You are not the only community like that. In fact, I would say the majority of communities did not previously have all these minimum requirements adopted locally, um, but they, FEMA is requiring that communities adopt those moving forward. Now, these are not new things. These are things that have been in federal code since the program was established in the late 80s. Communities have been doing this all along. It's just that FEMA wants these adopted locally, because how often are we all looking at the federal code, right? We're looking at our local codes. They want them adopted locally. So that's my really high overview. I can certainly answer any questions. Uh, maybe I spurred more questions than I did answers, so please let me know if I can clarify anything as well.
All right. I feel like I have a few questions, but I want to turn to the board first. Um, what questions do we have about, about this process, about, um, I mean, my big question's going to be, I, I guess the why is because things have been updated. And Ms. Page, please, talk right over me and interrupt me if I say something wrong. I, we, we, we take protocols seriously enough, so interrupt me if I say something incorrect, please. Um, I guess one question I'm going to have is, like, I get the why is because things have been updated and we're supposed to, but, um, I think I'm going to been updated and we're supposed to, but I think I'm going to want to understand what this changes for the town as we do it, and based on that, if, my other question's going to be, how do we sell it? Because, and that may be that change is irrelevant, but if it's a big change for citizens, we're going to need to understand, because whatever we do still has to get approved by town meeting. What other questions do we expect to be asking? If we can lay out questions a little bit ahead of time, that might help Ms. Pate give us, not that we can't have on-the-fly questions, but that might help her give us a more complete view at once.
Yeah, I'm not sure if she touched upon it, but anyone that's affected by it, are they notified?
Okay, that's a, that'll be a direct one. Are people notified, Ms. Pate, of the change if it impacts them somehow? How does that work?
Yep, so there's kind of two different avenues where that happens. So as far as if they're, so the whole, let me back up. So what the program mentioned is the community's responsibility.
Ms. Pate, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you one second. I apologize. Is it possible for the audio booth to increase the volume of Ms. Pate in here a little bit, or from Zoom, just up? I'm a little hard of hearing, and it's a little difficult for me, but I-
Does it help if I put this like this? Is that louder on your end?
Yes, that is actually, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's okay. I don't mind looking weird, so you can hear me. That's a good trade-off. So there's kind, there's two different avenues here. So first, let's back up. So as I mentioned, when the community enrolled in the program, you agreed to adopt and enforce local regulations. So now in Massachusetts, those are located in three different places. They're located in state building code, which is mandatory, the community's already doing that. They're located in the Wetlands Protection Act, again, mandatory, you're already doing that. And then the remainder, which is actually a very small portion of those, is located in your local floodplain bylaws. And so those local floodplain bylaws apply to anywhere in the community on those flood insurance rate maps as being in the floodplain. So the fact that now there may be properties that were either not in the floodplain before, and now they're newly mapped in the floodplain, there may be flood, I'm sorry, properties in the floodplain that were in the floodplain before, and now they're not in the floodplain. Or you're going to have properties who were always in the floodplain, and they're still in the floodplain, or they were not in the floodplain, and they're still not in the floodplain. So as far as any requirements in your local regulation, state building code, wetlands protection act, if somebody is now newly mapped into the floodplain, that's ultimately the community's responsibility to let them know. Now, at the same time, there's mandatory purchase requirements that are tied to properties in the floodplain, so if anybody has any federal assistance, or should I say federally-backed federal assistance on their property, so the most common of that is a federally-backed mortgage, but it could certainly also be any type of lien, loan, any disaster assistance that's federally backed. If they're located in the floodplain on this flood insurance rate map, they're required for the length of that federal aid or any ties to that to have flood insurance for the life of that, that aid or that mortgage, for example. So if there was a property that was not in the floodplain, and now all of a sudden they will be in the floodplain, as far as their mortgage goes and having that flood insurance, that would be up to the lender to notify that property owner. So the community is not really getting involved as far as that mandatory flood insurance purchase requirement goes, where the community is more involved implementing those regulations from state building code, Wetland Protection Act, and then at the local level, your local floodplain regulations. Does that help clarify that?
Great, wonderful, thank you so much.
You can still hear me too, right? I didn't go out during that?
I'm sorry?
You can still hear me okay?
Yes, yeah, no, this is great, thank you.
Okay.
So I think that must dovetail into how you sell it. Like, if we do not adopt it, it seems to me that people would no longer be eligible for flood insurance. So it's another, you know, favorite word of, you know, the state of, you know, it's mandatory, you have to adopt it, essential. Is that correct?
That is true. So if the community was to not adopt the minimum requirements in the model bylaw, and also not adopt this new map date, you're at risk of being suspended from the program soon as those maps go into effect in July. FEMA is the entity that ultimately determines if you have a compliant bylaw or not, so it's not the state, but FEMA is the one that would actually make the determination. And so if that were to happen, then potentially anybody who currently has a flood insurance policy through the National Flood Insurance Program would not be able to renew that policy, and nobody would be able to create a new policy through the National Flood Insurance Program. There is private insurance, flood insurance policies available that are out there. General understanding is those are much more expensive, and you're much more at the whim of, you know, the insurance provider can change those at any time versus like the federal flood insurance. If you were to have one claim, 10 claims, 100 claims, they couldn't, you know, for example, drop or change your policy because of the number of claims you have.
Okay, no, that makes sense, thank you.
Mr. Chair, a quick question.
Please, please.
Katie, have you seen the new maps? I think they just got completed for Lunenburg or most of Lunenburg. Have you, maybe it's not a fair question, but did you notice any substantial changes from the prior, I mean, I know there are, but-
So I have not personally gone through and looked at your current maps from 1980 compared to the new maps that are going into effect. I did download all of your new maps earlier today to look at, just to see, you know, what kind of floodplain you had, and you do have some significant floodplain and floodway in the community, but I did not directly compare that to the 1982 maps. One thing to note about these maps is that they, besides the fact that they're just more accurate because they're newer, they're also much more like user-friendly to use, in my opinion. You know, they have aerial photography behind it, they're also available digitally, so you can view them on all, like, the GIS viewers versus having a literal white paper map with lines drawn on it as well. So sometimes communities, when you have these older maps from the 80s, it's kind of hard to do that comparison, it's better just to look at the new maps and determine, you know, where the floodplain is. Of course, you could always refer back to, you know, the building official in your community or the conservation agent who'd be more familiar with where those floodplanes are on those, the current maps from the 80s.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just thinking ahead, it sounds like it may behoove us to put together a graphic showing the changes.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, just that will help us communicate to the community what's changing.
Yeah.
I mean, just because I, maps are hard for many people.
Katie, that's all obviously going to be available in the map viewer, in those links that you sent us to-
Yep, yep, and I can redo them again, but everything is already publicly available. Those maps can be loaded by anybody who has internet, so.
So I'll start working on that to make sure, as soon as that's available, we get it out there.
Thank you.
I'd like to question that specific thing.
Yeah.
I'm looking at Mr. Mappa right now, the MassGIS, digitalmass.gov, I'm looking at FEMA National Flood Hazard Layer Polygons, I'm seeing flood hazards in Townsend, Groton, Shirley, and Lancaster, but I don't see anything in Lunenburg.
So I can tell you the answer to that. So that is because your current map is from the 1980s, and it's not digitally available. So currently, you've never had mapping on Mass Mappa, it's never been on that National Flood Hazard Layer because it's never been digitalized by FEMA. But once these new maps go into effect in July, those new maps will be available digitally on, like, Mass Mappa and the National Flood Hazard Layer. What you can do now to view them is you can actually download the PDF of the map panels. If you guys have access to GIS, you can download the GIS, like, the shape files for them. And then FEMA also has another viewer called the Flood Map Changes Viewer, and this is where you can view those preliminary maps on the same type of viewer as like what you're looking at on Mass Mappa. It's just not on those finalized because the maps aren't effective yet till July, so they won't be on those like Mass Mappa and that National Flood Hazard Layer until they're officially effective on that effective date.
Excellent, thank you.
I'll work getting that stuff to you as soon as it's more or less available at a preliminary form.
Great, thank you. Golly, it's nice having an expert in the room who can answer these things real quick, very much appreciated. And, okay, I mean, I, golly, I think most of my questions have actually been answered at this point because we have, just thinking it through, we're going to have the map, we can figure ourselves what the changes are, we have the model bylaw with the requirements we have to hit, and, yeah, do we, what other questions do we have on this? I want to have more, I want to feel like I need to know more because we have access to Ms. Pate, but-
Well, next steps, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
Is that I'll get this map information, and I'll take the actual bylaw and put it in draft form.
Okay.
Now you have all this guidance, it's just a big document explaining everything, and it's very thorough, but I will produce the actual draft zoning amendment. Katie wants to look at it first, they need to review it and improve it to make sure it conforms. So I'll probably have that in about two weeks.
Okay.
And the warrant closes March 17th, so that's your timeline right there, we got a couple more meetings.
Okay, all right, great. In that case, if we're all set, I'm going to say thank you to Ms. Pate because we don't need her for the rest, and she can go back to the rest of her life then.
The last thing I wanted to share is while we were talking about insurance, I pulled up all the publicly information on insurance through National Flood Insurance Program, and Lunenburg has 19 policies in place with the total coverage of about $5.5 million, just for reference, and that's publicly available, I can send that information in follow-up to Chris.
Thank you. I'll actually ask one more question. You're the expert, is there anything I should be asking you right now that we haven't?
Um, no, no, a lot of the questions you're asking are very typical of questions, especially communities that have not had new flood maps in a long time. I personally think it's a really exciting thing because it means that now you can regulate on maps that are actually accurate, you know, aren't, you know, 40 years old, and hopefully they're much easier and also can be used much more moving forward, it's just even a planning tool in the community, because they're going to just be so much more accessible, just being digital versus having like a white background with arbitrary lines on it, so.
Great, thank you so much, really appreciate your time tonight, it was a big help for all of us.
Katie, I'll be talking to you soon, obviously. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any questions, happy to help out anytime.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
And thank you, Chris, for setting that up.
Yes, thank you very much.
She's great, so that was helpful.
Now, a quick follow-up question I have to kind of round out this topic for now. How do we, and this is all the local stuff now, how do we get, I mean, the warrants closed for town bodies, I expressed to the previous town manager, to the interim town manager's office, so irrelevant now, I expressed discontent, shall we say, about the idea, about the, what felt like a very late-game change in the warrant, in when we had to get warrant articles in, as we kind of discussed at our last meeting, because that's info we need like six months in advance, not a month and a half in advance. What, how do we get things on the warrant article now that it's closed to internal town bodies? It has to be a citizen petition from one of us or something, I don't know the details there.
Well, there's, in terms of the overall process, think there was this initial submission that was needed.
Yeah.
And that was, you know, remember when we had the zoning workshop at the last meeting, the placeholder language was required by February 1st, and so we got that in.
Oh, okay.
I threw something together and got it in so that you guys wouldn't get any heat, and it would just, you know, make it easier to proceed, but the actual warrant language in the form that goes into the warrant, that is the meat and the bones, and that is due by March 17th. So we've got over a month to get this right, or for me to get it right so that you're satisfied it's the right thing, and then that's when the warrant closes and nothing else can come in. All of this other talk about it would have to be a citizen's petition, that's just the placeholder language. The initial, you're sort of reserving this space on the billboard for now, to develop the warrant language, that'll come later. So we have flexibility here, but now here's an example where the state's got a moving target for us on the ADU, and, you know, the golden rule with that placeholder language is you have to stay in the four corners of the intent of the language, and now I don't know if we actually do. So what, all I can say to you is, let's move forward with the actual draft motions that will be in the preliminary warrant that are due on March 17th, get them where you guys are satisfied it's the right thing for the town, and you're comfortable with them, and we'll make that deadline on the 17th. What happens after that, it's really, you know, we have to have the public hearing, we have to do all the other required things under the statute, but we've got a, I think a month and a half to really try to get this right in the warrant.
All right, thank you.
Does that make sense?
No.
Okay.
I am frustrated, bordering angry, this is my angry voice. Not with you, not even with any one person in particular, it's certainly not with you, Chris.
No, why you'd be mad at me, but-
But no, there's-
You can be mad at the state.
Yeah, no, that is-
These things have come fast and furious, and now it's, the requirements are changing. That's compressing everything for us.
We've got moving requirements and moving deadlines from the state. We have last-minute shifting deadlines locally for getting things in, and then having to stay in the four corners for the warrant article. I get that that was done because we have a new town manager who's now working, and to try to ease that transition, but it puts boards like ours in a, a very unfortunate position, would be the Catholic charitable phrase that I would choose to use. Another one would be, oh, wow, now I almost just flat-out said a word you can't see on TV, okay. We have jobs to do, and we have a lot of jobs. I got up in front of the town and said, hey, the planning board wants to work on solar. I did that over a year ago. We haven't had the opportunity to look at solar because they keep throwing things at us. There is work we have to do, except what I don't understand is why. Why do, and I'm sure there's background legal things going on, but why does a national policy change if it's something we have to do? Is it then something we have to waste our time on? And I say waste because if it has to happen, it should be constructed at the federal level so we don't have to deal with it. Because we have, we need to do the business of running this town as opposed to the business of dancing and jumping through hoops that may well be needed, but if they're mandatory, let's remove us from that equation enough that we can actually make improvements for the citizenry rather than, I mean, I get to the flood, I accept the flood maps are improvements, accurate data, it's necessary, but why do we need to have a hand in it if we don't actually have a hand in it, if all we can do is look at it and say, okay? Anyway, my apologies, we have people, friends who are here, too, we have applicants, let's get them up here. Let's move on, unless there's a big objection, I like to move on to public hearings, and let's hit 494 Electric Ave. And for those at home, this is a continuation of a long-running public hearing, and so we don't need to open the public hearing or anything like that.
All right. For the record, Chris Anderson with Hanning Engineering here on behalf of DNA Lunenburg L.C. This project was brought before the board, I'm saying a few months ago now. So just to bring the board back up to speed about the project is, it's the intent of the applicant to construct a new parking lot to service an existing restaurant facility as well as modifying the existing parking in front of the structure as well, in addition to constructing a additional retail commercial space on the property. We were before the board a few meetings ago, received quite a bit of comment and concern raised by the various abutters as well as town departments. So just to go over the general changes that we've made thus far, it'll be a little bit more advantageous. One of the pri- raised by the various abutters as well as town departments. So just to go over the general changes that we've made thus far, it'll be a little bit more advantageous. One of the primary concerns was stormwater runoff. The existing accessory structure on the, adjacent to the restaurant did have a gutter that was kind of overflowing and gone to abutting properties. We're intending to capture that and redirect it into the stormwater system so that it flows offensively, quote unquote, discontinued from overland flow. In addition to that, we did have peer review performed on the overall project by Graves Engineering. We did finally get the peer review letter earlier today and effectively relative to all stormwater and hydrology calculations, they're all set. But just to go over everything again, effectively we're capturing everything, the mass majority of the runoff from the proposed impervious areas, treating it and directing it towards one to detention or infiltration basins on the property for peak rate mitigation as well as stormwater treatment. One of the few other major concerns that were raised at the previous hearings was relative to parking impacts and traffic input coming into the Pierce Ave section of the site. As such, we have pulled back the parking immediately against Pierce Ave. So now we're maintaining the appropriate offset. Board member requesting a waiver. Ultimately, we found that it's more advantageous to the overall neighborhood to remove that. So we meet the setback requirements. And beneficially to that as well, there's no more vehicles directly facing the abutting properties across Pierce Ave, if you will. We're maintaining still the solid wall fence along the entire side of the property in that portion of the area, as well as doing some additional evergreen plantings along the fill slope to help kind of break up that solid wall fence, if you will. In addition to that, we have relocated the proposed dumpster pad from its current location, which is kind of floating, if you will, in the corner of the building. And it's being located to the opposite side of Pierce Ave so that it's shielded appropriately, it's protected from view, and it's easily accessible as well. We did also take a look at a couple of access points going into the parking lot. I believe one of the comments raised by Mr. Riley was incorporating some dividers to help designate traffic lanes. We've incorporated that as well, as well as additional striping and landscape barriers to help designate a designated pedestrian travel path from the parking lot area to the actual restaurant facility itself. In addition to that, a couple additional landscaping features as well were incorporated. And we've addressed a couple, the mass majority of the comments raised by the various town departments. I'll note that we did get a order of conditions from the Conservation Commission relative to work within their area, which was limited to effectively just a stormwater basin. So that portion of the site has been approved by them within order of conditions. And I apologize, there was a couple, quite a few changes that were made just to address comments. And I think the last outstanding item from a town department perspective was the fire department. We provided what's called an E1 HP95 truck, if you will. For everybody else in the world, that's just a large ladder truck. It's the City of Worcester's design template for vehicle turnings and maneuvers. Lunenburg doesn't have a vehicle that large. They have a little bit smaller of one. So one of the comments that was raised by the fire department was providing a turning maneuver for that specific vehicle. The board might remember, we were before on another subject matter and that question was raised and we had a back and forth. The fire department is just requesting us to provide that information. This vehicle that Lunenburg has is a little bit smaller so it can easily accommodate the turning maneuvers that the larger vehicle can make. So supplemental information can be provided if the board would like as well for that. But we'll definitely provide it for the fire department as part of the building permit process. I think with that being said, those were the primary changes to the site plan. If there's any questions from the board, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, I'm going to turn for questions from the board and then I'll open for public comment. But I want to handle board things first and then we'll go from there. Just kind of saying for everyone, order of operations. What questions do we have? Please, Mr. McLeod.
I think I remember some residents having concerns about vehicles accessing the property through the neighborhoods coming from Waylon.
So the predominant mode of traffic, if you will, for the actual tenants or the restaurant use is from Electric Ave. The few handful of cars that might come down the side roads is minimal at best. So it's not the primary concern. I do know that there was a concern raised by the abutters relative to access along Pierce Ave. Right now Pierce Ave, for lack of a better term, is kind of chaotic in this area. There's no defined edge of traveled path, no striping, traffic control features. It's very Wild West-ish, if you will, in this area. By performing the proposed modifications that we're suggesting, we're going to be setting up proper turning and curbading into the site. So it's all granite, so it's a defined travel path. We're removing the current parking situation that's currently in the area. It's, parking is everywhere, so people don't know where to go. That's the primary issue that's currently happening on the site. By eliminating the free parking, if you will, in the area, putting it in a defined location, as well as providing traffic markings, center line, stripes, as well as stop bars, stop signage, all that kind of fun stuff, it's helping control the traffic better in order to make sure that people do the appropriate turning maneuvers to get back onto Electric Ave.
And on that, on that topic, this is, to my, I just want to make sure that the statements I'm making are correct, that my understanding is correct, really. This increases the parking available for Il Forno. I don't think there's anything, but I want to ask, are there any changes? There's no changes to the capacity for Il Forno with this, correct?
Correct. There is no change in the capacity of the site or the restaurant use itself. I will note the only thing that's happening to the restaurant facility itself is that we're incorporating a canopy between the two shelters for environmental protections, if you will, so people don't get rained on when they're walking between the two buildings. As well as reinstating a patio that was there a couple of months ago that was removed at the request of the building department. So besides that, the buildings are going to remain intact and the capacity of those structures is going to remain as is.
So for you, it's reinstating a patio that was there. For us, this is effective. We haven't done a plan with the patio or anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we're all on the, I want to make sure, when I say we, you, us, the public, that we all have the same thing. So it seems to me like this would eliminate, will hopefully eliminate some of the on-street parking issues that we've seen on Pierce Ave previously.
Correct.
Okay.
It will definitely alleviate that issue that's out there right now.
Great, all right. I know we've heard about that in the past as well. I'm just trying to make sure. I have a lot of things I want to make sure aren't just assumptions on my part that are actually correct. Okay. Other questions, please?
Yeah, so I think that the, you know, the issue, if I remember correctly, of the neighbor, neighbors, or at least one neighbor being concerned of drawing traffic through Waylon Road, from Waylon Road through, say, like Elizabeth Street or Wallace Park, you know, it would draw, it would draw people to and from the restaurant through those neighborhoods, which would actually not be my primary concern. It certainly is a concern. But all of those traffic controls and everything you described are essentially focused right on the area where the pedestrians would be crossing.
Correct. So by the nature of the development, we're not proposing any further improvements along Pierce Ave, except right where the turning maneuvers are occurring.
So my concern is cars coming, queuing up, as you would say in your, in your, in your realm, as they, as they're exiting the property, going out onto Electric Ave, queuing up there, say, you know, even one car, but two, which I think would be a pretty common occurrence, you know, coupled with vehicles queuing up on Electric Ave waiting to enter into Pierce. I think anybody that is now channeled where you're channeling the pedestrians will be walking in between the vehicles that are queued up on Pierce, possibly putting them at risk of someone darting from Electric Ave onto Pierce and being, that, the operator of that vehicle on Electric Ave would have their view impacted by the vehicles queued on Pierce and would possibly likely not see the pedestrian that could be crossing between the vehicles, maybe even on the crosswalk, but maybe if, you know, if you could envision somebody crossing the street outside of the crosswalk would add even more of a threat to pedestrians. And it seems to me that that's, that's precisely one of the things to be trying to avoid by having a parking lot across the street from a restaurant, which I understand that the, the ownership or control of Pierce is still, as far as, far as I know, is still being researched. But I do, overall, I think it addresses a lot of issues of, as it relates to parking. I think it's, it's moving, you know, far superior than the current, the current situation, particularly with the, the landscaping that's been, you know, added to the front of the restaurant. I think overall it's a, it's a great improvement, but we can't do that at the, you know, the extreme threat to pedestrians.
That's understood and we, we see where you're coming from with that. I think an alternative approach is to, because right now there's no, we are not showing any proposed signage dictating that there is a crosswalk. So it is unfortunately not the intent to be blind, but it is right now. A solution to that would be to start incorporating pedestrian crossing signs so that when vehicles do make that turn into Pierce Ave, if you will, they're brought to the attention that there is a crosswalk there and that, that, to keep an eye on it like any other crosswalk and, you know, the state, the country, if you will, bringing something to their attention. That plus with the crosswalk painting on this road, that also helps quite a bit as well. So I think incorporating a traffic sign or a series of traffic signs in that area, both coming northbound and southbound along Electric Ave, could alleviate that concern.
And those all sound excellent. I think what, the fact that where that crosswalk is in conjunction to, you know, the proximity to Electric Ave, Pierce, and the entrance to that parking lot, there's just, you know, I use that analogy of someone darting in from, you know, and just assuming all weather conditions are ideal. This could even be broad daylight, no glare, nothing. I think, you know, someone darts in or even just comes in at a normal rate, that, you know, all those warning signs is really gives no area of response time. I mean, that is right in the thick of it. I mean, it's, it's right there. It's not 100 yards down the road or, you know, or, or even, it's just, it's right there. So, you know, and not having, it just seems to me, and this, you know, obviously we go beyond, you know, probably what the bylaws allow, you know, you'd certainly need some kind of variance. But it just seems like that, the two-part, you know, the proposed retail complex and the, and that parking lot, if those were connected and they, you know, had one sole access, you know, egress from Electric Ave. It just, in that, in having that entrance exit further down, say closer, you know, I think it went towards the retail building away from Pierce, seems like a logical location. And again, I realize it's not that simple, you know, dealing with the government never is. But if you come in there and then you park in the, the general parking lot and you're channeling all your pedestrians towards Electric Ave, onto a sidewalk essentially, over to the crosswalk against Pierce, you've already, you know, removed vast majority of, if, you know, well, all the traffic that would be dedicated to the restaurant. So it just, you know, I, I realize that, that, you know, illogical, but that seems to make the most sense.
I was going to say almost the exact same as you. To me, it doesn't make sense to have an entrance right there on Pierce to that parking lot because not only are you residents going down Pierce, yes, but also people coming in right off of Electric Avenue, having to make a quick left into the parking lot. You're going to have an issue with traffic on Electric Avenue for people slowing down and turning in and then having to wait. What if there's somebody waiting at the parking lot? And you're completely correct. All of the pedestrians are going to be funneling right there across the entryway. So it's going to slow even more. And for me, that just doesn't look safe. 100% not safe. It makes more sense to have an entrance off of Electric Avenue, like you said, and then have the pedestrian crosswalk be on its own thing. So that way, the people going through the crosswalk, they're only going to have to deal with residents going up Pierce or if people need to turn around. It's less of a chance of, of any kind of accident if that entrance is off of electric. At least that's how I see it.
So one thing I want, I want to call out, and part of this is my opinion because I'm not an engineer and I can't give, like, facts on this. It seems that this design, and I get the concerns and I may share them, I don't know yet. I'm chewing it all over. What I like about it is we talk about the landscaping in front of Il Forno, but what we're really looking at there is, right now, that is all wide open to electric, which is super duper unsafe to have effectively no points of entry onto electric, or like infinite points of entry, right? If, unless the parking lot's full, people are going to pull in anywhere in there. That's a less predictable traffic pattern. It also creates, not only for car-on-car collisions, but for any pedestrians walking on electric on that side. It creates a threat along the entire length of the parking lot. Limiting entry in front of Il Forno negates a lot of that. Now, what I do want to know is, I'm assuming that the two part, that you have the re, the parking lot for the retail space in the separate Il Forno parking lot. And I assume that that was all intentional decisions, because, I mean, decisions are intentional by default. I'm curious what the reasoning is. We've heard some concerns from the board. Help us understand.
Sure. So relative to the commercial pad site, one of the reasons why we went with that configuration, if you will, for lack of a better term, is to try to keep it separate so that the retail's component's not mixing with the restaurant component. That fire access is a straight loop road and people can make turning maneuvers very well. We tried to avoid connecting directly to Electric Ave, only because Electric Ave is steadily busy. We don't want to have any additional turning maneuvers going in and out of the site in that area, especially so close to Pierce Ave. In addition to that, it's also more of a functionality component to the site relative to the restaurant use. Because the parking is disconnected, if you will, from the restaurant locus, creating a second, or exclusively only electric app connection would potentially limit the site extensively, only because as, if you were to think about it, if you were driving to the Il Forno restaurant and the redesigned parking lot is full, you would just keep going, unfortunately. This way, when people come to Il Forno, they see that it's full, or the parking lot, the front of the building is full, they can easily make the turn and get into the parking lot so they can still go to the restaurant itself. That was the intent behind going off of Pierce Ave rather than exclusively only electric. That would be our primary concern with eliminating Pierce Ave in its entirety. I think an investigation might be warranted about restricting Pierce Ave to an in-out, or an in-only so that people can still maintain that flow pattern. They can go to the restaurant. They see the main parking lots full. They can go into the secondary and they can still go to the restaurant itself. That would limit Electric Ave to an exit only. Kind of achieves what you're trying to talk about. But it just, it adds another turning maneuver into Electric Ave, which is what we're truly trying to avoid. Just because I drive this road all day. I live in New Hampshire, so I drive by the site constantly. And it's not super busy, but it's a good steady busy. And we're just trying to avoid as many curb cuts along that road as possible.
Well, I think that example of an operator traveling down Electric Ave, scoping out the parking lot in front of the restaurant, realizing it's full and then determining to turn into the, the main parking lot is exactly the type of distracted driver that I'd be concerned with that may hit a pedestrian.
Hmm. I feel like there must be best practices for this. Like.
They're, Mr. Chair, if I may, they're generally called slip-on aisles, slip-on, slip-off aisles. aisles, and CVS has one, and we've talked a little bit about it. What's the consideration there for having sort of a dedicated right-hand lane where people could slip off Electric and then queue before they reach the entrance?
So, those kinds of-
Look to CVS, and they have one.
Yeah, and CVS has a much higher flow, traffic flow generation than these kinds of developments would have. That's the primary component to that.
So you've got the room, and, you know, it looks like it's in the public way that we'd accommodate that, we'd certainly do that. That seems to be the best practice solution I'm, I think would fit here, but.
And so you're talking about a dedicated right-hand turn lane. Yeah, could you just point on there where, I think I get it, I just want to make sure.
Started here, or starting back here, and just have a slip-in.
It's, yeah, decelerating lane or accelerating lane is what it is.
Yeah, technical term for it.
I also think, I'm catching myself doing this, so I'm gonna bring it up. I have no clue if others are or not, but I keep in my mind, assuming this is going to be a traffic increase, and it shouldn't be?
Not until they apply for increased capacity, which is exactly what they're gonna do.
Can I express a frustration with that, too?
Sure.
This is just in general, not about the plan or anything. This was one of the first things I witnessed as a planning board member from start to finish, and call it naivety, but like, when the additional building was proposed, it was no problem, we have enough parking, you know, we're not gonna need to come back, you know, for any additional parking. It was written, no problem. And now, we're back here, and it's not enough parking, they need additional parking. I understand the law, and I understand the law says that it's their property, they can develop it as such if they need more parking, I understand that, but it's frustrating when we had so many citizens come and say, this is a really big issue for us already, and now we're just kind of adding to their frustrations with this. So I feel for the citizens, and I, you know, I'm just disappointed because I feel like we got kind of bamboozled when it came to the parking. I might be wrong, that's just my opinion.
No, that's fine. I'll give them a chance to respond if they wish, they don't have to, because past business, et cetera, et cetera, but-
It's already approved, so it's, you know.
Yeah. If you want, you know, that's fine. Okay. Yeah.
So I guess I would just like to hear, you know, why the, you know, entrance, even if it was a dedicated parking lot, if they weren't connected to the proposed retail building, why the entrance couldn't be, you know, off of Electric Ave, still closer to, you know, further towards the proposed retail building. You know, I'd need to have a better understanding of why that can't happen before I could, you know, try to wrap my head around this plan. And then my other question is, I know I'm still struggling with the whole idea of peer review, and that this did in fact have a peer review. Is any of that peer review done for specific to pedestrian traffic? Like, there seems to be a lot of focus on stormwater, which of course is important, but, you know, human beings are quite important to me, and I'm just wondering if that much, that amount of scrutiny that was applied to the stormwater was applied to pedestrians?
I can't speak to what Graves Engineering specifically centered around. I know they did review general engineering comments. I would defer to Graves Engineering, I don't want to speak on their behalf relative to that. Relative to trying to shift entryways closer to Electric, or Pierce Ave, if you will, that's more of a strictly motor vehicle operation perspective. You need time to make decisions. Can you make it, can you pull out of the site without getting hit by a truck or a car? That's why we try to separate driveways as much as humanly as possible, especially from roadways, because roadways intersections are generally the more traffic-producing activities points. So, in order for us to make sure we had enough offset, we would have to try to drag that entryway as far as humanly possible from Pierce Ave, just so that there is sufficient time for a driver to make a decision on how they want to proceed.
Which I think would give them more time if it was, if the entrance was dedicated to Electric Ave. And I will apologize, because I am the liaison to the EDC, and I know there's a gentleman even here that made some comments of trying to make Lunenburg, you know, more business-friendly, so I, you know, I make these comments with that in mind, that we do need to be business-friendly and encourage improvements to existing, you know, businesses as well as, you know, attracting new businesses. But, you know, that, here lies the balance of, you know, trying to be, you know, compliant and, you know, be easy on existing businesses, but, you know, the areas that I've expressed concerns are, you know, still remain, and I'm not convinced yet that there's not something better.
I have kind of a general question, and it's got a lot to do with all this. If I remember correctly, when this was first shown to us, and when we first got the, oh my god, moment when Pierce Ave might actually not be the town's, if Pierce Ave is in fact the town's, and it is in fact a right-of-way, would this development of a parking lot across the street from Il Forno be allowed by our zoning?
To my understanding, having been in some conversations for this, I'm gonna, you can tell me if I get it wrong. I want to see if I got it right. If the town, oh, and I've got some questions about the Pierce Ave thing for, on our end too. If the town, if Pierce Ave is the town's, then this would not, this parking would not, by default, be compatible with our current parking bylaw. There is-
That's all I was looking for.
I'm sorry?
That's all I was looking for.
Okay. There's, I think, a, people can always apply, I believe, even under that bylaw, but I could be wrong on that, and say, hey, this might not meet, the kind of the classic pre-existing non-conforming, right? This gets us closer to conforming. Instead of having people parking on the street, they would be parking in a safer place, and they could apply, and then it would be up to us to decide if that were the case. Am I, did I present that correctly?
Nice.
I like to feel like I know what I'm talking about, it's so rare in life.
Can I ask, can I ask Chris?
Please, yeah, go ahead.
So, if in fact this was a public way, and the bylaw says that they couldn't do the parking, would there be any avoidance of, I mean, would they even be able to make the application? Would we be able to say, that's okay, we'll allow it this time?
No.
No, okay. So, I would recommend, as I think I did the first time we heard this, is that we put off all this discussion in Planning Board about something that may or may not even work because of a legal issue.
The problem we're finding is, we've asked town council, and we're just not getting any kind of response that says no. So, it appears, given that they've made the effort, that they've made the legal argument that the town doesn't own it. The town's onus then is to say, but we do, and here's the process, and we went through everything properly, and it appears we didn't.
So what would be the, what would be the, what would be the problem with town council saying, no, they're correct, and not even having a battle about it? Why not just say that they're correct, and let's move forward?
That's what we're trying to get, one way or the other, we haven't gotten it.
Why are we wasting our time in this Planning Board, then, waiting for a legal decision from somebody else that we have no authority over?
That's a good question.
I think I asked it the first time this was presented to us as well.
It's always been a good question.
So we're still, town council still hasn't give us, given us a-
Town council's gotten everything, that he's identified that he needs to sort of, you know, do that analysis, title fee examination, everything. The applicant's provided it, we just, we haven't gotten anything.
Town council hasn't responded.
So what I, the way I interpret that is, absent something in writing that's definitive, if the town doesn't present an argument, there is no argument. The town doesn't have one.
When is the next, when is town council's next office hours?
Tomorrow, I think.
Do we know if there's free slots available?
There is.
What time?
I know I'll be here, I can meet you-
But I mean, like, but I know we have to sign up ahead of time for slots.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the calendar, and I don't know if I can pull it up here, I'll try and pull it up.
Okay, 'cause I'd like to sit down with town council in, face-to-face, and say, we're in the same room. Give me something, because-
I think I have a slot for noon that I can, I'll gladly give you.
Let me double-check. I think that would be super.
Yep. The only reason I bring this up, and I'm not against this development whatsoever, I'm against breaking the rules, and I'm against delaying things, and I'm against putting us against the corner, trying to make decisions on what about this, what about that, and, well, if it wasn't even an available option in the first place, then why are we even considering it? Second of all, if it is their property, then that's gonna lead to other questions to the, to the, about is the residents in the neighborhood? And it seems like any kind of a one-way, this way, that way, something else, they're gonna be forcing traffic to use Pierce Ave and those small side streets. They're already putting two new curb cuts, and there's two new curb cuts there. They're using two existing curb cuts, and they're, they are improving the front of the Il Forno restaurant by removing that unrestricted frontage, that's good. However, I think all these comments made about turning movements and pedestrian movements are extremely valid, and if it's their land, then they don't need to have a driveway connecting the parking lot to the building, they could have sidewalks connecting that. That would eliminate any traffic coming in and out off of Pierce Ave, except for the existing parking. And that way, if the existing parking's full, that they should pass it, they park in the overflow, or you could split the driveways to the retail and to the parking area very easily, and they could be quite autonomous, they're just next to each other, the same curb cut, so to speak.
Mr. Chair, through you and the board, if I may on this?
Yeah, please.
To the issue of the peer reviewer, Graves is not a traffic engineer, they're not a full-house peer review service. So they focus on, and they do a very good job on stormwater design and that kind of thing, but this is why you sometimes want another peer reviewer available who either has in-house traffic engineers to evaluate traffic aspects of an application, or you just have somebody available, you know, directly. And there are, you know, people that are available for that, I could certainly get you a couple names for consideration. If it's that important, and the board's got some really good suggestions on how to mitigate this, but that's generally what would happen with an application like this, my experience. The peer reviewer would assign in-house, or they would get a traffic peer reviewer to do that portion of the application.
Because I feel like we've had that in the, we've had traffic in peer review in the past.
Larger project. If this was a shopping center, I'm pretty sure the peer review, that traffic analysis would be part of the required studies.
It is.
And if it is a shopping center, which I think the last, has that been determined that it is or it is not? With 6,000 square feet, the building commissioners commented at the last meeting we had.
About the retail component?
The retail component adds 6,000 square feet of retail area and parking area so that it qualifies as a shopping center in our bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
Not just a parking lot, a shopping center.
Yeah. He made that determination quite a while ago.
Okay.
I don't know if it was about this, but, yeah.
So, wouldn't a traffic analysis be a basis, a basic requirement of?
Generally speaking, sure.
So we're not, we're not stretching it at all?
So, I'm gonna back this up for one second, I just want to, because I have to clear my brain a little. Where is office hours, town council office hours?
Library.
Library, okay, great.
It's 12:40.
Oh, 12:40? I have a 12:50 meeting tomorrow.
Although I do see an 11:40 and 12:00 that are both just open, so.
Dude, could you grab me 11:40? That would be amazing, thank you. That would, I will, and hopefully that will help all of us, because if town council giving us a definitive answer could help move this forward one way or another somehow, and do we feel that a site visit would be helpful, to see the lay of the land and the roads and everything together and be able to discuss it in place?
Have we not all been to the site? We're not supposed to deliberate on a site visit.
Well, we can, if we, we've done it before, we have, but we set it up as a meeting.
Or you have less than four board members.
What's that?
Or you have less than four board members at the site at any point in time, then it's not-
Yeah, less than, it'd have to be-
Four.
Four?
Yeah, I believe it's four.
Now, our quorum is three, so we'd have to have-
I have to double-check, unfortunately, with town council, but-
Site review.
But we could have, I mean, we have the ability to post a meeting and be there and discuss and talk things over. We don't have to, but that is a choice we could have to look at.
If we post a meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, post a meeting.
An abundance of caution, I could do that for you, that's true, you're covered.
And then we could go there, look it over, the applicant could walk us through the lay of the land there, and we could talk it, and it's not an issue, it's a posted meeting, we can talk about it while there, rather than going, well, I remember seeing, I remember seeing. Is that something that the board would find beneficial? I'm getting some notes. Okay. Is that something the applicant would find? Excellent, okay. We can set that up, I mean, we don't have to do that this minute, but let's get that set up, and I think that will help with some of this. If we're okay with it, I'd like to turn to the public and get public comments, because that would certainly, for me, impact a lot of my thoughts on this.
Yeah, I was just not unclear where that conversation relative to the traffic engineer landed.
Fair. I think you're right. Let's-
I didn't know if that was gonna be af, you know, if they felt it was necessary after the site visit, I just didn't know. I mean, I think it sounded like, you know, being kind of pessimistic about the peer review, I kind of liked that one.
Kind of, you know, I think I'm comfy with the, with us deciding beforehand, or, I don't care if we decide before or after. I feel like the applicant might have an opinion, because that could be an additional fee, but it also could impact timeline. So I'm kind of cool saying, hey, looks like we might want a traffic review, how do you want, like, how do you want to handle this? Is that comfy for us? Hey, looks like we might need a traffic review, how would you like to handle this? We could do it before or after a site visit. Again, it advantages either way for you.
So the, so typically a traffic review, if you will, has a traffic study to review.
Yeah.
Which has not truly been done in a formal fashion for this site yet. So I think best course of action would be, let's go to the sidewalk, we'll talk to, I'll talk with the applicant, figure out how we want to proceed relative to traffic impacts, and then, if we, as long as we post it at the sidewalk on the town calendar and everything like that, we can make that decision there. I think that gives us a little bit of time to digest all the comments and concerns that were raised tonight relative to traffic turning and maneuvers and entryways and everything like that, so we can have something to look at, if you will, while on-site, so you can see what we're looking at on the ground versus what's on paper.
Great. I'm going to turn to the public now, because I'd like to hear their thoughts, and we have many members of the public who are here. Great. Mr. McDonald, come on up.
Hi, Dave McDonald, 155 Allen Road in Lunenburg. Thank you, guys, for everything. Glad, I like your comments, and safety is number one for any project you do. But if you look at the project, the way it is now, and what was there before, the Cappy's Restaurant, it's always been a restaurant, so it's not a change of use, but if you look at some other businesses in town, I'm glad you're not gonna do the same mistakes as what they did with the Chinese restaurant, where you, it's a nightmare going in there, but they do have that exit going on onto, was it Electric Ave on Route 13, which is a great thing. And those are new in the industry as far as traffic controls or whatever, which would look good on Electric Ave. Uh, if you can make a right-hand turn coming out of there, that's, that saves a lot of traffic and so on. But if you look at the entrance or as it is now, there is a line of sight. And, and that's always important because we had a problem up on Townsend Harbor Road and Mumpus Road, so we changed that intersection to make it safer. So what I'm asking is, I like what you're doing. It's, it's a good thing. Uh, but again, I don't know how many months you guys have been working on this. It sounds like it's been a long time, but you made the smartest remarks tonight. If you guys agree upon an entrance and you're going to do a site visit, I'd highly recommend you have Bill Bernard from the DPW, who worked for DOT, who, who is an engineer in the traffic study. He, he can help you right off the bat. You probably get an answer. So the question I have or, or, or the suggestion I have is if you're going to do a sidewalk, bring Bill. If you're happy with this and then the lawyers say it's okay, you want to modify it, Bill would help you with that, making the adjustments, but you can get it done sooner than, than later. You, you don't want another Whalum, uh, the, the lakefront property where you have a restaurant and you got to cross the street that is also very busy. I know this area. I used to live on Whalum Road and I know the traffic and I know the neighbors, but your, uh, Al Fornos has already done major improvements on drainage to help the town. And I know that because I was the chairman of the Sewer Commission. So a lot of improvements have been made. And I, and I'm really pleased with what you're doing, but I think it'd be done easier if you guys agree upon and, and your lawyer, uh, if you sit there and the lawyer says, yeah, we don't care, do what you want. Is this acceptable to you after you do the walkthrough? I guess is what I'm saying. Does it, do you have any, am I coming across right way?
Yeah.
But, but I, I just got to thank you for what you do, but look, look at it as far as if you're going in there and try it. Go home tonight, just take the left and the right. And, and again, I like his opinion about the direct line going into Electric Ave. So thank you guys and good luck.
Thank you. I like the idea of inviting Mr. Bernard to join us. Yeah, we're getting nods, so as we plan this, could we invite, invite Mr. Bernard to join us for the sidewalk? So that, so that he's there at what is a sidewalk, but it's a meeting sidewalk, right? Whatever we call that, it's a meeting. He can advise as well from his perspective. We have a subject matter expert sitting there. Let's make use. And that would also help us hopefully move things along so we can be as sensitive as we can be to the applicant's time. Yeah.
And I'm a big fan of the more the merrier, so where it's actually a meeting anyway, if we extended that invitation to the police and fire.
Yeah. They may or not want to, but there's no harm in saying, we're doing this if you want, yeah. Great. Dave, please, Mr. McDonald, you will. If you're going to speak, it has to be at the microphone. I know. We can hear you, but our friends out on YouTube next week cannot.
Dave McDonald, Island Road. I would recommend the fire department more than the police, fire department, and we just had a fire down there on Whalum Road that we were at on Sunday. Um, they, they would be interested about the vehicle size and, and all that, but especially the turn in radiuses. That's where all the equipment's going to go. So the police department, but it's up to you guys. But the more the merrier, I agree.
Mm-hmm. Great. Uh, see, no harm in extending the invitation and if they feel that their opinion is not helpful, that is, that's good knowledge, actually, then we know.
I just think it would be important if you went, particularly with the, the three department heads there, just a little background of why exactly we'd appreciate their presence there.
Mm-hmm.
Not just a, hey, we're meeting here because they'll easily just kind of fall off the radar, but if it's public safety slash pedestrian.
Yeah, I think that's a fair, we, we want to tell them
Why.
why we're inviting them, because otherwise.
Because they're invited to this meeting, you know, by default.
Yeah. No, I think you raise a good point, saying here is a concern if you feel that your presence would be helpful.
We would, actually, we would like them.
Yeah, we'd like it if you're
Yeah.
if you're, if you feel your presence would be helpful, we would like you there.
I mean, I think I'd go as far as to use the word request.
To use the word?
Request.
Okay, request. I'm comfy with that. All right. Great. Other public comment? If you're on, and I see Mr. Pease is getting up, but if you're out there on Zoom land and you have a pub, and you're going to want public comment, go ahead and just toss that hand up at any point so we know. You can use the hand raise feature. Mr. Pease, please tell us who you are.
Uh, I'm Bob Pease and I live at 11 Winter Green Court. Um, I'm, I go to Al Fornos probably two, three times a year. And I always like it there, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here because I really believe that this town has to do more to um, help its present businesses. Um, you know, I've heard talk tonight about a traffic study. Uh, I haven't heard anything tonight. This shows that there's going to be an increase in traffic, you know, due to what's, what's being proposed here. Um, and I think that, you know, usually a traffic study happens when there's going to be an increase in traffic. Not, it's, it's about, uh, traffic studies, you know, are because what's going to be the volume, where it's going to come from. Um, in my, I've lived in Lunenburg for 15 years now. Before that, I lived in Hebron, Connecticut for 32 years. And while I was there, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for six years. And when we did uh, traffic there, I heard some people talk tonight about, well, why didn't you access this parking lot from Electric Avenue? And back, I don't know how they do it in Massachusetts, but in Connecticut, the DOT really discouraged uh, curb cuts close to each other. You know, like out of Pierce Avenue and out of the parking lot, you know, on, on to a hot, a road, you know, where the traffic's going by, you know, very rapidly. Um, and I think that um, uh, you know, there's been a lot of also concerns expressed tonight about, uh, you know, people will be crossing, you know, near Electric Avenue. Well, where are crosswalks typically? Crosswalks typically are at intersections, uh, you know, right, right there. And so I, I would urge you to go in the direction of, you know, crosswalk signage and stuff and, and maybe, you know, the, the turn lane that was suggested. Um. Uh, I think that's what I have to say. Um, you know, I, I really do believe that, you know, the board has an ethical and moral obligation to work with its present businesses, you know, to help them achieve and see, you know, how can you work within your regulations to help them achieve the goals that they're trying to achieve? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pease. Other public comment? Okay. Anything else from the board at this time?
I did find their comments helpful. I mean, it's good, it's good insight to hear the, the, you know, differing views. And I think that, you know, it's good to have that going into the, you know, the, the site visit. And, uh, you know, I don't disagree. I, like I had stated, I think it's very important that we not only, you know, attract businesses to town, but, you know, you know, cherish the ones that we do have.
No, I'm in a position where I am less concerned about the um, about the crosswalk, et cetera, than some, than some of the other members of the board.
You'll need to unlock your iPhone first.
I will unlock my iPhone when I want, thank you.
You'll need to turn on the.
Um, yeah, I'm an Android guy, sorry. Um. I think, I think a sidewalk will be helpful for our understanding. Um, I personally agree with Mr. Pease in that I don't see the need for a traffic study. But I get the idea of wanting someone who reviews plans for pedestrian safety to review it. But I also think a lot of this, we need to understand, the questions I have remaining are, one, from town council, okay, is this not really our road? Two, assuming it isn't, which I, I am suspecting will be the case, but I want those words from the lawyer rather than our guess at the words from the lawyer. I want to know what that means. Because if we don't own the road, but it's a road, I, I'm left with a million questions logistically and, I mean, to understand what that translates to in reality. I think once we have all that answered, we have a site visit, I'm hoping a lot of this will feel more straightforward to us. And we'll be able to pinpoint our needs and our concerns very precisely to help the applicant meet those needs.
Yeah, just echoing one of the comments from the, the public, um, I think Mr. Allison did probably have the most, you know, logical comments overall in the sense that if that is in fact, if Pierce Ave is their property and they were able to incorporate that into their, into their property, make it their property, incorporate it into the, the parking lot, thereby isolating the neighborhoods from their property, uh, that it would be a win-win and that, you know, they could, then, then all of a sudden, that entrance is now on to Electric Ave. And, you know, so I, back to his point where, you know, we need to know, they need to know, everybody needs to know who owns Pierce. So again, giving Mr. Allison credit for, you know, best comment.
And the other question would be, no matter who owns Pierce, what, or if the applicant owns Pierce, what can they do with it? I don't know that answer either because I don't know what it means when something's been a road for over 100 years, but it wasn't. Um, and that's just laws. They're confusing.
I'd like to say another possibly unsettling thing to some people is that this is the planning board of the town of Lunenburg and it's, 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 it's to protect the citizens of the town of Lunenburg. Now, now, everybody gets all up in arms when I'm hard on a contractor, when they're developing a piece of property so that they can get done as cheaply and quickly as possible, turn it around and sell it and bye-bye, gone. This is not that case. I totally understand that. However, there is an entire neighborhood back there of people who were scared less when, when this came up.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you could see it when this came up. Those are the people that this planning board is charged with taking care of, protecting. Those are the people. Not the lawyers, not the engineers, not the businesses necessarily. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to talk against business. I'm simply trying to state fact that this is for the people of the town of Lunenburg, this group. That's what we're here for. That's what we're elected by. Right? Now, we have EDCs, we have all these other groups, but this is the planning board. We oversee site development, site design, site plans. You know, we look out for the public safety and welfare and benefit. So I know some people are not going to like anything that comes out of my mouth. I know some people are not going to like it because it sounds weird to them or whatever, but I, I, I hate to say it, I've, I've been doing this for a long time and, and I'm fairly knowledgeable about the topics that we discuss. And I don't usually just say things just to be heard. I think that the first comment that was brought up was very valid. I think it was followed up by another member and, and I waited to hear it play out. And I think that for the reasons that I stated and for the other reasons that were stated and also the reasons that you stated, I think we need to clear this issue up with Pierce Ave before we move forward with design and layout of anything. Because given the result of whether it's the towns or it's not the towns, that's going to change a lot of things. And not just for this business or this proposed business or this proposed shopping center or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of people that are impacted by this and hardly any of them are here in this room right now.
Yeah. Um, I will say I've tried to do some, I have tried to do some diligence in ter, it's not really due diligence because it's not required of our role, but I, I've tried to do some follow-up on what does it mean if the town doesn't own the road? And that has been hard information to come by because I'm also aware that we are where this is being talked about. We have no control over it, but we're still the places being discussed in the public forum.
Right.
Therefore, people are going to come to us and say, what does it mean?
It's another reason it shouldn't be talked about here until it's figured out. Just my, my mind.
And I get that, I think the applicant would argue, um, and I don't mean to put words in your collective mouths, that their case is very clear. And I think it may well be. I really, I'm not thrilled that we haven't gotten a concise answer on this from town council. When it seems, for, for our board is extremely important. Hopefully we can get that tomorrow. I will pass whatever info I get. I will pass on to the rest of the board, not for discussion, but just as facts obtained from town council. So we go into an eventual sidewalk with that knowledge and can discuss it at that time as well. Because it won't be a sidewalk, sidewalk. It will be a meeting onsite. Yeah, and again, if you are a member, if you are someone who is impacted by this and you have concerns that, I, I know there's been lighting changes and other things made to the plan to meet resident needs in the area. If you are a resident in that area and you still have concerns and we're not addressing them, we need you to speak up. That's true for any project. We need you to speak up and let us know. So do please come to the meeting, do send us emails. Um, let us know because that's the info we need to make informed decisions.
Yeah, I was just, basically just going to ask, would it be prudent, maybe when we posted that meeting for the site visit, if it indicated that we may have a discussion, I guess depending on the outcome of your meeting with um, town council of, you know, uh, Pierce? Because, you know, if, if there's, if, if there's, if we still are walking in the dark like we are now, then I would think part of the conversation, like, it seems like they could be proposing to, you know, take over Pierce and we'd be in that same position of, we don't know if you can or can't. So if part of that meeting, we, we disclose that we were going to talk about, um, you know, encompassing Pierce, that that would put people on notice of what that, what that discussion is to, to with the neighbors. I mean, maybe they would hate that, hate having that isolation, but, I mean, they have plenty of access to Whalum Road, but.
We can certainly, uh, it has to have an agenda. We can include that as, I would just put it as a sub bullet
Yeah.
in that section on the agenda so people see it or are aware. I'm guessing they will be anyway, but we'll figure that. All right. Okay. Please, please. Just say it all right at the microphone.
Sorry, attorney of the applicant, um, thank you again for hearing us tonight. I guess, Mr. Chairman, I just ask, and maybe through the planner, if you get some kind of an answer from town council tomorrow, I would just appreciate if it could share some, because again, we've, we've been here, we've been here in good faith and again, sir, we, we, we done our research, we did an opinion letter. And um, I don't want to get into the legal mumbo jumbo, if you will, but we can't deny anybody access. The, the, this road shows on a plan. Okay, so the people have access to Pierce, okay? It's a little bit of a legal anomaly. This town has accepted Pierce Ave, so the town's responsible for it. It's just the underpinning, the, the legal fee was never taken by the town. So again, I think I was saying maybe two or three meetings ago, this is not the first time I've dealt with this issue. I've dealt with it in other towns. It is a little bit unique, but it's not unheard of. And I think matter of fact, you and I maybe had a discussion about it at one point in time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was saying that.
So we can't, you know, I can't, I'm not legal counsel to anybody other than my client, but we can't deny anybody access. The people can come up and down Pierce Ave. It's, it shows on a plan. They have a right to use it.
And to the record, I, Mr. Chair, if I may, I would say the applicant has, has really gone above and beyond to make available their information.
My, my abstract has actually reached out to town council.
So.
So again, Mr. Chairman, again, I know there's privilege and non-privilege and I don't need to give you legal advice, but if he says yea or nay, that's not really privileged.
Uh, whatever isn't legal advice, but I will make, I will not be the one sending that email. I will make sure Chris is the one sending that email because he's the one who knows what he's doing and I know exactly enough to be very dangerous.
Fair enough. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to you some point tomorrow, mid-afternoon, and if we get an answer, we have an answer.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. So I have, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Um, oh, we need to uh, continue. I guess the continuation would be to the, whatever meeting we decide, but we don't have that yet. Do we need to commit to that meeting?
You have to continue to a date certain.
Yeah, so if we wanted to do this at the, so do we have to continue to the sidewalk? Yeah, so if we wanted to do this at the, so do we have to continue to the site walk? And does that mean we have to figure the site walk now before we leave?
I would not, if, if I may, I would not want to have a meeting at the site walk for anything other than the site walk.
I agree.
I would continue to one of your scheduled meetings as the date certain.
Okay. Okay, I'm...
And that doesn't preclude you from scheduling a site walk.
And talking about this project at the site walk while we're doing it. That's all allowed then. I just want to make, I want to make sure we're covered, yeah.
So, just, not a lawyer, but every other city, town, department, board, commission I've ever done work with, you can have a site walk, schedule it if you want, and at that point, there could be deliberation.
Yes.
You can have a site walk and not have deliberation, it'd be a fat gathering conversation. So, you can ask, typically how it goes is, I show you where the site is, I show you X, Y, and Z, and you leave it at that. So, just, I know there's concern, that's pretty much how sidewalks, my career have ever gone.
I hear that. My, here's the thing I want to make sure we can do, okay? We're having a lot of discussion about what would this be like, and I want us to have the freedom to say, I want Mr. McLeod to be able to say, well, when I'm standing here, it really looks to me like this doesn't work for some reason. And I want to be able to stand there and say, I agree. Or, are you sure? Because I have this other interpretation. And I'd like us to be able to do that in the moment when we're looking at it, rather than playing, memory is fallible. Like, memory, human memory, it turns out, is absolute trash. If you ever want to do the, read the research on it, it's fascinating. Our brains are very good at tricking us into thinking they work well.
Mr. Chair, I can just tell you, my experience, what I've always done, and it's worked fine, is you continue to a date certain on your regular schedule, and that, at the same time, that night, you schedule a site meeting to be posted, because there may be deliberation. So, you do both. You're concerned that, okay, we scheduled this site meeting, and then we go there, we deliberate, nobody knows about it, following this...
I want to make sure we can talk while we're there, and I want to make sure that...
Schedule both tonight, I would say.
Okay.
And you may have people that don't know their schedule, and it, and so, you know, sometimes it's a moving target, but case law and statute has said you're well within your rights, schedule a fact-finding site visit, the applicant or not, at any time, with other members or not, and to discuss the facts of, of the application. I can get you some reference on that, if you...
I, I have heard every word you said, and I'm not fully processing it, I apologize. What are we doing here so we can move forward effectively?
You're continuing to a date certain on your regular schedule. You're definitely doing that.
Okay.
You're also asking the board, when would you like to schedule the site visit? When are people available?
And we're doing...
Chris, you will post this meeting because there may be deliberation.
Okay. And we, do we have to do that part now, or can we do that after the meeting so we're not taking up time? If it has to be now, it has to be now.
I would say, to be safe, it would be, you'd have to be now, because
Okay.
all that, always that danger that some deliberation will go on outside of the public's knowledge.
Yeah, oh, I just meant about sit down after the meeting and figure our schedules. I'm fine, we can do that now. Okay. Great. So, first, let's get this on our next meeting.
Motion to continue public hearing for 494 Electric Avenue to the February 24th meeting at 6:05.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, so we know where that... I have a fairly flexible schedule in terms of availability when there's daylight. When can we meet that is accessible for the, for the board? And then we can see if we, is, if that works for the applicant as well.
I also have a relatively flexible schedule.
If we were looking at, because we could do next week, that'd be fine, that's, Mr. Pease, do you have a...
Mr. Chair, I, I, Bob Pease, living in Green Court, I was chair of the Conservation Commission for three years. We do a site walk for every single hearing we do. And I spent a fair amount of time discussing the, the ins and outs of site walks with Adam Costa. And, you know, they're not a public meeting, they're an exemption to the open meeting law. You know, you can't do deliberation, you can't take votes, but, you know, but as, you know, as he said, you know, you go, it's a fact-finding mission, you know, and there's discussion. I, I think you're on very solid ground to just take and, you know, decide whenever you decide when you're going to do the site walk. And we never decide when sidewalks are going to be in open meeting on the Conservation Commission, and we've always been on very solid ground. I hope that's...
Okay. I know, I appreciate that, Mr. Pease. If we can talk to each other and discuss, I'm fine with just a standard of site walk. I just want to make sure we can actually talk to each other, and it's not, oh, I'm, I see, you know, we've learned this, and then Tim and I are each having different thoughts we have to hold on to until our meeting when we're not onsite. I want to be able to have that freedom of discussion, and I want it to be legal. If we can do that during a site walk, so much the better.
Mr. Pease just said
Yes.
you can't deliberate, and my understanding of your example was that would be deliberation.
There's a gray area there, right? There's a lot of...
Gray area, of course, but I'm always been on the air, on the side of, air, air on the side of caution.
Always.
That's always been me.
Yeah.
But I'm not the guy getting paid for it, and I'm not the guy looking at losing my job over some, or being reprimanded, or whatever. It's just, and, and I agree, we should have gotten response from town council, right? And hopefully, we'll get some tomorrow. And, you know, maybe, maybe the sidewalk rules are different for Conservation versus Planning Board, we don't know that either. I mean, like...
There are a little bit. I would just do both, as, you know, an abundance of caution.
Okay.
Do both, and if it's a small logistical challenge tonight, just it, it, it's well worth it.
All right, let's do a quick, when can we, in that case, our hired professional says, here's when we, says do it this way, we'll do it that way. Looking at next week, largely free is school vacation week, so, great. If there's no particular conflicts, if we can all be flexible, we can turn to the applicant and say, hey, what works for you?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair. He's closed on Mondays, that would probably be the best day, because then you're not dealing with, you know, his employees, people coming in and out. Seems like that would make the most sense.
The only issue would be Monday is President's Day, and I'm assuming you don't work President's Day.
Yeah, it'll be in the region of the state.
That, that's going to, being the federal holiday is going to be an issue for us. So...
Would you be okay doing it, saying Monday is the meeting?
I...
That almost makes more sense, doesn't it?
I, I don't have a problem with that at all, myself.
Usually works best if...
Does that, does Monday, the 24th, work for? Great.
No, that doesn't work for me.
If we can get four of us, are you...
That's fine.
Okay, great.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so, let's aim for Monday, the 24th, what time? You have a... I am going to, if no one's going to suggest anything, I'm going to suggest 1:00 PM out of, by pulling a number out of thin air. How does that work for everybody?
It does work.
Well, I, I could throw another wrench in here, we get, we're going to have, we have a foot of snow almost already, we're going to have at least another foot in the next week, so, are we going to be able to see what we want to see?
I feel like we will, myself.
Okay.
Because, I'm not worried about, like, it's all going to get redone, so I'm mostly worried about the road and sightlines, or what it, and seeing everything, myself, if you even know, if there's other concerns.
You know, one is also fine, but later, like, if it was at 5:00 with, you know, increased traffic and stuff, might give us a, a good snapshot of what's going on. And if there are, you know, snowbanks and stuff, it's, they're going to be there in the future as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Graves and see if they can refer to a traffic engineer.
Okay.
Start that, does that make sense?
My concern on 5:00 would be daylight. I don't think we're quite guaranteeing light then. Would you want to bump to 4:00?
Sure. I'm hoping.
Does 4:00, okay, got a thumbs up from the applicant. Does 4:00 work for, I just want to make check with your team too, make sure that works for y'all. Okay.
Sure.
Great, 4:00...
Makes sense on the peer review, traffic? I don't want to leave that without.
Right, but one thought before I lose it too is, you know, just acknowledging that that is a Monday where they're not open.
There's a Monday with a what?
They're not open on Mondays, is that, so we wouldn't be seeing traffic, you know, business traffic.
No, but we'd be, but that leaves us free to walk and see, and lets us see the overall.
But I think, like, you know, and I'm not, this is fine, but I'm just saying, like, 5:00 o'clock on a Friday, you'd see what the, you know...
Oh, I see, you're, you're thinking that it would be better because...
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to further complicate it, but I'm just acknowledging that there is a deficiency with a Monday, because they're not open.
And not only that, if we make it at 4:00, we're going to be limiting ourselves to no more than an hour, or maybe more, because we have to be back here for 6:00 o'clock meeting.
Hmm. I'm hearing you. I think, I get what you're saying, you want to see what
Yeah.
it feels like in the thick of things. I am open, but I'd like us just to, at some point, just pick something, like...
And I, and I'm also not opposed to everyone just doing in individuals, I mean, I've been there several times, so I'm very comfortable with what's going on there, so I don't, I'm willing to do that, the site visit, I don't want to be, but I think, you know, I would continue to keep going, as, you know, as, you know, although, like you said, it's not our due diligence, I, you know, in, in, in respect for the business and their request, I do go through, I have gone through there several times, and we'll do it again, so, again, I, I don't know that the, you know, it's particularly cumbersome to do a organized site visit where I personally am comfortable with individual visits.
Okay.
We can also do Tuesdays or Wednesdays, at least the building will be occupied to some extent, so you can kind of see where the traffic's doing a little bit better. Obviously, it's not going to be super, super peak time, like Friday afternoon or Friday night, but it'll at least give you some kind of idea of how the site's kind of functioning now. And at least at that point, we can kind of point out, from the civil engineering's perspective, what, what we see on a regular basis.
Okay. What about, you know, I didn't like 5:00 because of daylight, but I'm hearing your concern, and if we're going to do it for traffic, what about Wednesday, the 19th, at 5:00 PM? That is next week, is before our next meeting. We, that will give us an idea of what it looks like under operation. Does that work for us?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Is that good for, okay. Great, okay. I just want, if I don't get it on my calendar now, it will never exist, I know me. All right. So, I think we are all set then.
Hey, folks.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just, I had cut him short, you were mentioning about the traffic survey or something.
I'll reach out to Graves and see if they can refer someone, even though they don't have that expertise.
Because I think that's what we had thrown back, back at them, and they had indicated they...
Many calls, eh?
That they were happy not, they were happy to wait until the site visit.
Yeah, let's hold off until the site visit, that way, so, I know what you're trying, I know what the board's looking for in a traffic study.
Not a study, not a traffic study, but to...
Am I all wet? Like, if, if someone who actually is, that's their, their business, like, again, that's the advantage of the, like, the police and fire chief there.
Yeah.
If they say, like, oh, no, 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 that's going to weigh heavily on me. Same thing if someone that actually has, you know, specific certifications and that said, nope, this is fine, I'd be like, oh, okay.
Nope, and Graves Engineering does what we do
Yeah.
also, and we do the site layout, walking paths, and all that kind of fun stuff. He won't necess, they won't necessarily get into the knitting gritty for a traffic study.
Yeah.
Like trips generated, timing, all that kind of stuff, but they will look at that on, they've done it for other projects of ours, so, that's something definitely in their wheelhouse. Definitely, I defer to Jeff Walsh over there, he'll, I can't speak for him, but he can at least direct you in the right path a lot better.
Okay. Great, sounds like we're on, sounds like we're on the same page.
Yep, so, we'll wait till the sidewalk to make a formal decision on that front.
Yes.
We'll gather some additional information and talk internally, and then, at that time, we can all get, make a formal decision, if you will.
Love it. All right, I think we're good. Thank you.
One more, one more, one more. You know, it's, DPW closes at 3:30.
Oh.
And I don't think he lives very close.
But there's stormwater meetings at 7:00.
What's that?
We can reach out to DPW and just confirm that, from a traffic perspective and a site layout perspective, are they okay?
Just wanted to make...
Okay.
Specifically to that concern. I know he did raise concern about utility and stuff, but we can, we'll reach out through to him again and say, hey, specific to the site, are you okay with this, or you have any other concerns? At least it's on record.
Yeah, just remind him to put it on OpenGov.
Yeah, I'm going to reach through PortalGrove for that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, sounds...
Would that be for the applicant's engineer, or for our land use director, to reach out to our DPW?
Both.
I can talk to him, but it's best if they talk directly to him, and then
Okay.
what's the issue, how's it being asked about, what's, where do they get our, do to do, address it, that kind of thing. Does he agree? The assumptions.
Okay. Great.
Cool.
All right, thank you. Okay, next public hearing. Woo! 213 Electric Ave. Stormwater management permit.
This is a new one, right?
This, this is a new one, right?
This is a new one.
Okay, that's why I thought, that's why...
All right. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 10th, 2025. It's wrong in the posting, just so you know, it says 2024.
What is it?
It's wrong in the posting, the wrong year. It's 2024, it's, we're 2025 now.
For the 213, like that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, it's right in the header, but it's wrong in the second sentence.
Yeah, just, just putting it, should be fine.
Good eyes.
Should be fine, right?
I didn't catch it when I reviewed it, yeah.
I can keep going though, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 10th, 2025, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review an application for stormwater management permit pursuant to 204-1D of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by Redbird Construction Incorporated for one-two family dwelling unit per lot with associated driveways, grading, and utilities. The subject property information, the location is 181, 189, 195, 213, and 221 Electric Avenue. Assessors map, 78, parcel number 70, 71, 72, 66, and 73. Owner is Redbird Construction Incorporated at 497 Lane Castor Street in Leominster, Mass, 01453. You can view the materials online at lunenburgma便道opengov.com search, via an email to the planning office at c. riley@lunenburgma.gov, or l. o'connell@lunenburgma.gov, or in person at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Great, take it away.
My name's Dan Shan, I'm here with Haley Ward. Just for the sake of time, I know you guys still have a busy agenda, I'm just going to kind of go through this pretty quickly, I'd be more than happy to answer any technical I'm just going to kind of go through this pretty quickly. I'd be more than happy to answer any technical question you guys may have afterwards. So what I have over here is I have a simplified version of the drawings, which you see shaded in green is after construction. That will be as a vegetative landscape, most likely grass in most areas. And the gray there is obviously driveways and then the brown there is for the buildings, um, to speak specifically for stormwater management. Um, the driveways are all generally pitched towards, um, separate rain gardens. Not really shown too well on that drawing there uh, with also a proposed filter strip edge along the side. Um, we also include some clay dams. This is just to try to help um, promote the water to go to the rain gardens and not just run all the way down the stone filter strip to Electric Ave. And you see this kind of similarly patterned through all five lots. Um, just to be full transparent, we've also submitted NOIs to the Conservation Commission for 213 and 221 Electric Avenue. We've only gone to them for, uh, 213 at this point. And so far, we're just waiting on going for a site visit once the snow kind of clears. Um, so with that, I'll turn it back to you guys and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And we do have a peer review from Graves on this as well.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. That looks like it came through on the 8th. I haven't, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to review.
That's okay.
Graves yet, so I'm giving a quick look, see, so I'm fully.
I can give you a brief overview if you like.
I'm sorry?
I can give you a brief overview if you like from, if you're, so pretty much Graves didn't really have too much comments on it. The biggest thing here is just confirmatory test pits. None of the, no test pits have been done for the rain gardens yet as part of Mass D E P stormwater standards, as well as your own personal bylaws. You need to demonstrate that you have two foot offset to groundwater from the basin bottom. So that would be the only thing that's really outstanding. Besides that, they had some, um, suggestions on placement for the clay dams to just kind of really help promote everything shedding towards it as well as some just clarity on leaders, just to make sure that during construction, they're constructed properly. That's a very brief overview of what they.
Can you do those adjustments on the clay dams?
Yeah, we could do that.
Great. And so what's the one outstanding item from it then?
So that would just be for test pits.
Test pits. Okay. All right. And you are super concise.
Trying to make it helpful.
Um, when can you do the test pits? Can you?
Uh, so with this time of the year, I really don't know. I'll have to talk to the applicant on that. Uh, I know he's in a rush to kind of get this thing started. So if I tell him that we probably need to do some test pits, it'd be probably quick to turn around. Uh, biggest thing that just from my perspective, from a concern would just be the frost barrier. I know digging in that kind of standard can sometimes really be tough to dig. So it depends on the machines he has. Uh, but based on his operation, I would suspect that in the next couple of weeks, um, it may be best to kind of at least wait till after the Conservation Commission's site walk, just so they don't see a bunch of disturbed area and then start asking a lot of questions. But I'd be more than happy to talk that over with the applicant as well as you guys as things kind of progress.
Okay, great. Questions from the board at this point?
So just for clarification, did they just preemptively do the, the peer review on this one without being asked?
This is the way it's rolling.
Yep.
So that, that's a model that, that I like, you know, when the, when the applicant themselves elects to spend their own money as opposed to us spending their money. I, I think that's, that's a nice touch.
Great. Um, other questions or comments from the board?
Um, one comment is that since they're all duplexes and it, it, it looks like you may have done the stormwater analysis for individual lot, per lot.
Yep.
Just so that you don't have drainage components for each, for two different duplexes.
Correct.
You're, you're going to need a, uh, some kind of an agreement between the homeowners about maintenance because it will be need to record during the deed.
Absolutely. Understood.
Hmm.
Uh, just to provide a little bit more background, just the stormwater analysis as well. We did also consider a significant amount of runoff just based on where the site is located. Everything kind of really does slope down towards this site. So we include all that as well as part of the analysis.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to review the, um, operating, the operation and maintenance plan. Operations is not a word, um, operation and maintenance plan. That's, okay, that's just the standard. That doesn't have anything about the duplexes and, well, I guess it depends. I mean, it's a duplex. Uh, I guess they would only need the shared if they're looking to sell them as separate units, correct? If it's a condex effectively. Cause otherwise they're individual rain gardens.
Why wouldn't they be single families if they didn't intend to sell them separately?
Yeah, I know. I think that's a fair point. Going for the condex thing here is the.
Yep.
Okay, great. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, wonderful. So I don't see a bunch of questions now. We have a good idea of what's going on. Um, waiting on the test pits and.
Homeowners agreement. I've, I've always, in my experience, we get that document to review.
Yeah, we need the.
Before things are.
Yeah.
So just so, you know, that basic template.
Sure. So do the soil test pits get over to you guys and get over to Graves Engineering to do the review? Is that my understanding correctly?
Yep. And, uh, and again, the homeowner's documents too, so that that shared maintenance, whatever that, whatever that form it takes is also, um, we know that it's been done.
Absolutely.
And so it's set for the, uh, future owners. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment? I see we have no one else in the room and one friend on Zoom. Uh, our friend on Zoom, go ahead and use that hand wave feature if that, if you want to speak and that doesn't work for you, go ahead and turn on your video or wave your hand or something, but seeing none. Assuming there's no public comment. Okay. Um, great. With nothing else, we could, sounds like we could continue to adjourn. When, when's good for you?
I guess the next available meeting.
Okay. Fine. Well, you have, uh, cause you said you wanted to wait on the test pits till ConCom.
That would be the 19th. So when's your next available meeting? Is that also the 19th?
Uh, 24th.
24th. I think that should be fine. It should give us a significant amount of time.
So Wednesday. You can get that to me. I could have a draft decision for the board to review.
Wow, that'd be banger.
And if you want, we can even push out to your first available in March.
Which, uh, I think either way is okay, whichever is better for you.
Let's just do the first available in March. That way it gives us plenty of time. We can get everything over and recording and stuff like that.
Love it. And that would be March 10th. Okay, so we could, for example, have a motion to, oh, I don't have the address. Yes, I do.
Motion to continue public hearing for 213 Electric Avenue to the March 10th meeting at 6:05 P. M.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you guys very much. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
An engineering report with very few comments, a concise presentation.
And they already looked great. Yeah.
Woo!
Nicely done.
Be still my heart. All right.
Maybe that's what happens to Whitman Bingham when it gets renamed.
Okay. Great. Looking at our agenda, that wraps our public hearings. We've done our zoning workshop too. Bang-a-rang, we're moving decisions.
Mr. Chair, I have decisions for you.
Okay.
For Goodrich Street.
And.
Sub Sun.
Sunny Hill. Yep.
And, um, I'm having all kinds of trouble with, uh, getting things on and off for various online, online beast, uh, applications. So the decisions are there. Goodrich there in the Nester Point.
Ah, that's what that is. Okay.
Trying to name them. Looks like it names them. Anyway, apologies.
No worries.
Streetwise as they should be. Um, and I've got two sets of each decision.
Okay, so the decision for, the decisions for Goodrich are at the top of our SharePoint. It says Agenda Item Unassigned 2. So we've got those.
That's a stormwater and a common driveway. Which you approved at the last.
Yep.
And with the standard conditions and special conditions. Not applicable. And then Sunny Hills, first down.
Okay.
Passing down.
It's 9. Sorry, I'm trying to move the microphone.
Oh.
The microphone's got, got a close stand.
Did that happen?
All right, we've got.
Ain't getting away with anything around here.
We've got hard copies if someone wants them. We've got the digital copies on the SharePoint as well to look at. And then we can sign if we're good. Just give a quick look, see.
You're gonna notice, people remember Claude, the header's gone because I just could, for some reason, I just could not get it to get your name right. I have no excuse.
Easy to change my name.
So I said, you know what? It's gone.
You were in the cloud.
It's not material to the, the decision, you know. It doesn't need to be there, so. Yeah, everything we do has to be online. It's a nightmare, but.
I couldn't.
headers, formatting. You might notice some formatting irregularities in there just because I couldn't get it right. It would autocorrect to wrong. It's, it's nothing we're working with. But everything's there.
I have a random question that has more to do with just, I see the, yeah, take it please, sorry. Um, because I see, so it's listed as M. Brenner asked for a motion to approve waivers. Yeah, T. Wilson, so moved. Uh, my only question would be, uh, I've been doing that to make life easier for others.
Yeah.
Is that, I assume that's cool, that that doesn't create any.
That's absolutely cool. You shouldn't be the one actually making.
I shouldn't make the motion, but it's cool if I say, hey, the motion could be this.
Absolutely.
Great. I just want to make sure that that wasn't.
It's, it's good. It's, you know, best practice that you do.
Stumbled upon doing something right. Love.
One of the ways that you, many that you excel, actually.
Um, 8:00 A. M. to 4:00 P. M. Yeah?
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, so standard condition, why for a single family residential house do you have to comply with the EDA?
What is it?
Americans would, so standard condition number three on the 255 Sunny Hill, I believe, right? It's a single family house. Why would they have to comply with the EDA?
I don't know.
It's our standard condition in.
Yeah, I'd, I'd take in each of our standard conditions because we just decided.
I just, if it does, if, if it doesn't make any sense to you, I don't think it should be in there.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think it's bad that it is in there. It's just, just, I don't think we should continue that if it's not for a reason.
Uh, do buildings not have to be built to AD, I thought even single family homes have to be built to E, ADA standards.
No.
No, not everybody is that way. No.
Oh, no. Okay. No, not full ADA. You're right. Nope, nevermind.
Yeah, I think there's specific things like railings on front steps. But I don't think it's.
Building code, you have to conform.
Yeah, no, you're right. No, I, I get the, I'm teasing them out of my mind. Cause you don't need ramp access, for example. Yeah.
What I think, because the board's talked about having to update, uh, standard conditions is I'll get a draft together, maybe not at the next meeting, but the meeting after
Mm-hmm.
Of common driveway standard conditions, stormwater standard conditions and site plan review.
Let's do that.
That we have now. And maybe suggest some, some red line changes. And then you can look and you can see what makes sense, what should be taken out. Let's update them.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Okay, um.
That, I'm sorry, I have a question.
No, please.
Does this mention something about recording on the deed, the requirements for maintenance?
Which one is this?
Stormwater permit?
Yeah, I, uh, there's language in there within the stormwater standard conditions. I believe that's what we agreed upon, although. As third to last, I was looking at that today. Well, do we need a special condition? You had a lot of, you know, I was watching the video. I remember Allison had a lot of questions about that. So I think that was proper and right. We agreed.
Yes.
Sufficient.
That's, that recording on.
Then there was one that didn't have it, so I added that in as a special condition. And the board talked about that. Cause I can't add a special condition that you don't, you know, it's obviously just what you motioned about.
So I'm searching for deed on the 560 Goodrich Street, um, stormwater. And I don't see the word deed anywhere in there, but maybe I'm, I'm just using my Ctrl F, so maybe.
Only occurrences 10.
Then I'm not even getting it on 10, so that's a, my search is failing.
Yeah, it only works if you're in like print.
Decision shall be recorded with a registry of deeds. We don't have, so we do need the thing about recording the, uh, maintenance.
In the deed.
On, yes.
Yeah, number one under special conditions. A, a legal framework must be provided for continuing maintenance of common areas such as the homeowners association to be recorded on all properties deeds herein.
Which one is that?
Uh, 560.
The, uh.
C. DSP?
That's for Goodrich. So I think that was the one where you motioned based on the conversation, a specific special condition for that purpose.
I don't think it should be a special condition for stormwater.
Yeah, and then we talked about that. So that's one where it should be a standard condition.
Standard, right? I mean, not just me. I think we need to agree on that, don't we?
Yeah, no, that was.
So that'd be one primary change that we.
So I thought that was part of our standard conditions before. That was something we've.
The Adams, the Adam Burney standard conditions that can't be found. Yes, I think they were.
Yeah.
Yes. But no longer can be found.
Yeah, we're, again, this is, uh, just Mr. Harris's standard conditions.
Oh.
As of last summer.
There's a totally.
Which we discussed assumed all the latest zoning regulations.
Okay.
Okay. So that fell off.
And where Mr. Harris got those? Nobody knows.
Uh, see, I thought he was using our, hmm.
We haven't been able to find that trail.
No, I, see, I thought, I get it. I mean, in the moment, I don't think we had any reason to think he was using different than the standard conditions we'd used for quite some time beforehand. So that's.
They were definitely different.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't think that was, uh, it is what it is. I, I mean, I'm not happy, but it's life.
They're, they're good standard conditions that, and there was an issue of, uh, hours of construction.
Mm-hmm.
And those, Mr. Harris's versions have that in all three.
Yeah.
Different types of permitting.
When we revisit, we've traditionally left the exact hours blank and then determined as, like, our standard conditions had the hours blank and we would specify when we made the decision, the hours. And we all, like, we had our, we usually do X, but I can think of when they were doing the work for the, um, for the autism school downtown, because it's on a, uh, because of where it was in relation to the schools and buses going by and pedestrian, pedestrian traffic, we actually, for example, in that case, gave different hours because.
What would you?
I don't, like, we shifted earlier because that worked for the applicant and letting them start earlier in the day wasn't going to disturb any residential and it was going to mean they weren't, um, having construction vehicles arriving when bus, in stuff, when buses were coming through.
Um, I mean, yeah, that makes total sense.
Yeah, and, and we've had others where we've put, but I think what we did before, we used to have those blank and every time, I'm drawing from the memory banks, when we made a decision, we'd say, with all standard conditions, construction hours, blah de blah and blah de blah.
So you would remember that.
Yeah, so that was, cause otherwise they were.
Standard conditions just make your life easier so you don't forget something or something.
Fine, we could do that too. Just want to be aware that, that that's, some of us may have habits that are less useful and it forced us to think about it. But if we just make a point of thinking.
Didn't you just tell us how bad we are at it?
What's that?
You told us earlier in the meeting how bad our brains are telling us we think.
Oh, no, we're off, the human brain is, look, is the most amazing thing on the planet. And it's also amazing that it functions and that we have coherent thought based on how much it strings together. The, uh, the understanding of memory is wild. It's really neat.
So I'd like to just, just. So I'd like to just, just dot the T here. So the Goodrich, right, 560 Goodrich was a common driveway with stormwater controls. So that's why we specified that it needed to have the, the deed, the, uh, agreement between the common owners and the common driveway, as well as the common stormwater.
Yeah.
Now, 255 Sunny Hill, a single-family house, no commonality at all, but it still has to have the, the maintenance requirements recorded on the deed. As do the Goodrich Street. They need to have, they need to have an agreement between the homeowners on the driveway, agreement on, on the stormwater controls, and they both have to have recorded on their deed, uh, maintenance agreements on the stormwater.
That's an interesting point. I mean, so you've got your authority under the, the regulations, with stormwater in this case. And if they don't maintain it, it's a violation of the permit. Violation of your permitting authority.
Right, but when they sell it, the next guy that buys it, as we've seen, they don't.
That's a reason to make sure you have it recorded on.
That's the reason for the deed, yes.
Because otherwise, it was, um.
I didn't know.
Yeah, it'd be, uh, I, I didn't know I had to do this, and then things aren't maintained pat. We were trying to future-proof and acknowledge that all this stormwater stuff is new. And you, and people can say, well, it's not really new. We've been doing it for X years. People can go 20-plus years without buying a house. And.
Yeah.
Info gets lost.
Monkey business with things that are omitted in deed recordings.
What's that?
A and R, we're having a hell of a time with assessors on A and Rs, because when they're recorded, the deeds aren't updated. To go with the approved A and R.
What?
So you have all these inconsistencies between the recorded deed and the recorded A and R.
Is that the, a failure at the registry, or?
Yes.
It's a failure.
Like, I mean, I mean, is that, people not reporting it?
Actually, people, you know, seeing a little loophole here to be, you know, lawyers and, I don't want to blame lawyers, but somebody on the, the applicant end.
Yep.
Uh, so, yeah, what I would say is, um, you know, notification would require recording of decisions in the registry. Anyone buying a property, that, that should be caught.
Mm-hmm.
With their title exam and, you know, but you can never have too much notification. Uh, there's nothing wrong with just putting it in the decisions. It's put in the decision. Is, so, does that need more language to that effect?
Um, well, so the 255 Sunny Hill had no language about accreditation of maintenance.
All right, so let's hold off, and I'll make that adjustment on that one.
Okay.
Cause did you motion him both that?
We've not motioned anything yet. Oh, oh, you mean at the.
You already.
In the past, okay, yeah.
Now you're looking at decision. If you don't see the decision reflects what you approved.
No, I, sorry, I was.
I'm pretty sure we all said we approved the, with standard conditions.
Yes.
Right. So, yeah, we all agreed. We all voted on it. Um, and then Goodrich, they do have the thing about the homeowners association because of the common driveway. But, uh, probably not about recording the maintenance requirements. And then you'd also, the homeowners association is also going to have to include the stormwater unless they did that law.
Yeah, we talked about this. This is a tricky gray area where the standard language about the need for common maintenance, there's a standard condition in the stormwater, but not the common driveway. It's, where do we, it, it's, you know, your best to just cover all your bases. Let me, if you want to hold, want me to hold off and add that stuff, I'll add it, because this is a time where you, the board can say, or intent was.
Yeah.
Motion improved it, subject to, you need to look at a draft decision to know that it reflects what the intent of your motion vote was.
And we were all under, yeah, and we were under the standing that that.
As long as you don't say, yeah, the applicant shall provide me chocolate-covered donuts for the rest of my life.
Yeah, no, and that was something that has, we have done.
You could try that, but you wouldn't get away with it.
That was something that was on our standard conditions and apparently stopped being used without our knowledge. So, like, without our full, without being brought to our attention, that was a full shift. So, like, the whole, yeah. You look confused by what I said.
Let me get that back into there. Let me find what you're talking about, get it back in there, and then have the staff for, for the next meeting. So you have enough time to see it.
Great.
Say, yes, that's it.
Okay, I like that. That works.
And then so future reference, we're gonna need to do the same way with those duplexes on individual lots, right?
Yep.
Homeowners Association, of course.
So there's gonna have.
And it's recorded on the deed itself.
So they're, they're gonna have to have maintenance requirements for both du, for both units of the duplex, and then they're also gonna have to have a homeowner's to maintain the stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of crappy way to do it, but it's, it's, my understanding of.
Well, it's not, it won't get done. If, if they don't do it, it won't get done. Nobody, town doesn't even have the right. Somebody complains and says, this is a huge problem over there. You gotta get down there and fix that. Town can't come on somebody's private property if they don't have the authority.
All right, so this is one of the fastest-growing communities in, in, in America. Is that true, in America, or definitely in New England?
Definitely in Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts, we're, I think, the fastest.
Okay, well, we've had our heads up our butts for decades when we've been experiencing some severe growth. There's been a lot of things that have gone unnoticed, underlooked, oversaw, uh, just missed. And, you know, the stormwater permits are a perfect example. Adam got here in 2015. He said, we had a stormwater regulation since 2008, and he helped us have our first stormwater hearing. Okay, so, that's, yeah, that's odd, and, and I'm not pointing fingers at this point. I am simply saying that if we don't record stuff and, and keep it consistent and have standards, they're gonna go away. And some people like that, but.
Well, people will take advantage of it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, I think I have my mission here.
All right.
Thank you.
Good.
I hope that helped.
Yep, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Very good points. Board discussions, master plan. Um, so, Tim, I know you tried to get the board to meet.
Yeah.
And they couldn't.
There's, continues to be a problem despite it being a charter for the first Thursday of every month. There are still people who, for one reason or another, are unavailable. Um, I have created a poll to try, and I haven't published it yet, to reach out to all the current members of the board to see if there is a better day, you know, like a first Wednesday or second or whatever. Um, that would be a better option for meeting days. Um, but yeah, at this point, I still haven't been able to get a meeting together.
Okay, and, now you didn't send, did you send the poll yet?
No, I haven't, I haven't published the poll yet.
Okay. Um.
They might say they want a bunch of meetings, but we really only need two more meetings for them.
I mean.
Review the final draft and the acceptance of the final draft.
I would love more from them. I, I'd love tons of input. Um.
Can I ask how many people showed up?
Um, I received enough, uh, notices that people weren't going to be available, that I, I didn't, uh, post a meeting.
So if you don't post, then you can't blame it on Quorum because it wasn't posted.
Sure. I, I.
And I'm not questioning you.
Yeah, I was sick and tired of showing up and not having Quorum.
I get you, I get you. It's frustrating, I know. We spent four or five years on this board with four people. Uh, we, I think we all know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, yeah, so can we reduce it some more? Not on the agenda, but I think it would be within our purview, would it not?
Um, so, after the last meeting, I got an email ostensibly blaming the board's problems on other, other, um, departments who hadn't shown up. I am not well enough coordinated to know who these people are, that, um, what boards it are that haven't been showing up. Um, I could try and determine that better, and we could see about cutting spots, but I don't have, all I have at the moment is somebody pointing fingers, saying, these are the people that are at fault, and I don't know enough myself to be comfortable to say, these are the spots we should be cutting.
And you're the de facto chair, cause you were vice chair before Josie stepped out? And when did Josie step down? How many months ago?
Uh, before the summer, when we went on hiatus.
During the summer, yeah.
Yeah, like five or six months.
Yeah.
Yep, and the idea was.
Unacceptable.
There was a summer hiatus anyway, and the goal was to pick up afterwards, and that hasn't material.
Where was the master plan at that point?
What's that?
Like percentage done? Where, where was it?
Uh, first set of surveys.
Uh, more than the first.
Second set of surveys.
Okay.
How many survey, I don't remember how many survey number was these. All but the most recent had, survey had been done. The most recent survey, um, was in the planning stages by that group.
Okay.
And then the inability to meet is what caused it to go out in the state it was with other discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. For. Could you bring us for our meeting in two weeks?
Hmm.
Um, and this requires a little legwork.
Sure.
But, like, your assessment of, here are the groups that have been attending.
Yeah.
Here are the groups that, or the representatives that have not been attending.
Sure.
Um, or aren't responding. I mean, you could also just put it out to the email and see who responds as well.
Yeah.
But a clear recommendation on, this is who, basically, these are the groups that are engaged.
Yeah.
These are the groups that are not engaging. I'd like it if you could also reach out to them and verify that this is the case.
Sure.
And then, based on that data, we can make a concrete decision at our next meeting, trim. Now, hopefully, you can have a meeting before then anyway, but if you can't, you can't. And if we can't get a recommenda, if the committee cannot meet, then you will be able to have a concrete recommendation of, here's who's engaged, who isn't, so we can make a decision.
Right.
Or if the group can meet, they can have that discussion and make that recommendation to us, which would be, personally, that would be my preference.
Yeah.
I don't want it to be from on high trimming. I'd rather the tree itself shed branches that weren't working out for it.
Sure.
And again, then, once the committee's functioning, we can hand it more to the committee again, which is good.
Yeah.
For gainless citizen voices heard, which is the whole point of this. Um, does that work as a plan for us? I, I hate to go two more weeks, but I don't think we have any data to act of note. We have.
Yeah.
Info.
You asked the question, how many more meetings are there of that group?
Mm-hmm.
Was the answer two?
That's all we, technically, all we really need is two more for review of the final draft.
Okay.
And then recommendation of the draft.
Okay, and that's regardless of the contract that we have with them, right?
Mm-hmm.
What about the contract?
To my understanding, we are fine with contract. I can verify with Remy.
I mean, could it, could it, could it include more than two more meetings?
Yes, yes, it can. No, um, we need two meetings.
Minimum.
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 More would be better for them to engage as much as they, the committee wants to engage.
I guess my question is, contractually, with, with the, with the consultants, how many more meetings can we have?
Twenty K, Sabalas.
Twenty, oh, twenty thousand dollars worth?
Me, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Or, the meetings, meeting runs about two K.
So, six, eight, ten, maybe?
Yeah. The consultants also frankly don't have to be there for every.
Right.
So that's.
So if they're not there, it doesn't cost two K?
No.
Okay. And so how much longer chronologically, how, 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 how many, how many more months are they wanting to stay on that hook? Is there a drop-dead date in the contract?
I, well, from what I hear, and I don't have it, it, it's, actually Julie did distribute it, and I'll have to look at it and.
Okay.
The understanding is, it's already expired, so they're working on.
Yeah.
On just, you know, the continuation of the existing contract.
Okay, that was.
Which happens frequently.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah. Everyone's playing ball. They would like us to wrap up. We'd like us to wrap up.
And so all the modules are finished? We talked, the last time I thought we said, but there was one more module to be finished.
I mean, I.
I don't know.
It's gotta be wrapped up before town meeting.
They have.
Asked.
They have gotten the data they're going to get. They would like some input from the committee. If they can't get it, they will move forward anyway. We have a call scheduled tomorrow. So I can get, I can get more concrete answers tomorrow, which doesn't help us tonight.
Yeah, doesn't help us for two weeks.
I've got a full implementation chapter now.
You what? Sorry?
The full implementation, draft implementation chapter.
I don't think I got that. Okay, maybe I didn't.
Did not. Okay, well, I can share.
Okay, I, I may, I may have missed it. Um.
I'll share it with the board because you shaved it at this point, but it's so. It's time to, it, we have enough to complete this.
Mm-hmm.
Draft. Let's say worst-case scenario, we have enough to complete this draft. I could finish it and give you a pretty good document.
No, there.
So, worst-case scenario, if there are no more public meetings of the subcommittee, are we still able to get the final copy from the consultants?
Yes.
And have it be official?
Yes.
As, as official as it is with the failed subcommittee?
I mean, you guys vote on it. You are the authority.
Exactly, okay.
You're the only ones that vote on it.
Yeah.
And make it legal and, and.
Okay, so.
Lining it to the state official.
So.
Best practice is to then report about it to the town meeting, get everybody's, you'd want to do that, right? But you guys are the authority.
So just because we paid for it doesn't mean we have to present it. I mean, we could continue having public hearings as a planning board, regardless of the subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Just something to think about. See, I was thinking that we were up against the wall. And that's why I was so adamant last meeting about, let's get off our ass and do something about this. Regardless if it's the right thing, let's try to do something. And that's why I was so adamant about it last meeting, and, and I, I hadn't thought.
It's becoming a larger issue.
Mm-hmm, that we need, we need to move forward. We, are we up against the wall? No. Do we still need to move forward at a good pace? Yes. And it doesn't seem like there's more we can do tonight, as frustrating as that is.
You don't have to do another one for 10 years.
For 25, that's a good track record.
Yeah, I'd say like, no town does 10 years, at least not that I've heard of. It'd be nice if they did, but, ugh. I understand why people find this process difficult, because it is. Um. All right, I'm gonna move us on. It is 10 minutes of nine. Abutting community notices. Is there anything we need tonight?
Um, oh, nothing crazy. Um, there was three notices from Fitchburg. Um, two of them were a notice of decision for multifamily conversions. One was eight units, one was 16, um, making use of like semi-existing space. One of them was like the second and third floor of a building. Um, and then another is an upcoming public hearing on February 25th for a mixed-use renovation, one unit commercial and 17 residential. And I don't think any of these were particularly close to the town line or anything.
So, okay, great, and, I mean, all of a size and scope that isn't really gonna impact us, so. Okay, committee reports, master plan steering committee we've just talked about. Open space.
Committee. Uh, we will be meeting on Wednesday, and that property 100 Townsend Harbor will be coming up as, on the agenda, but that's about it.
Okay. Okay. Municipal Building Design Committee.
I was not able to make the last meeting. However, they made their presentation, or there was a presentation made to the select board the next day, which was this past, uh, past Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe it was an hour and a half. I watched it. It was a good presentation. It was more than I remember seeing them give us as the committee, but it would included, you know, further comments from the last, and it was, it was very detailed and depth. And it was multidisciplinary. They had five, four, five different disciplines sitting, uh, at the, at the table, presenting it at the select board meeting. Um, if you haven't seen it, I'd encourage you to watch that to get, uh, most updated information. Um, and, you know, to continue on my non-attended committee report, uh, it was not well received on Facebook, so.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I was getting, I was getting lost in my own thought about trends and Facebook comments and
Yeah, no, it was posted by the town of Lunenburg, and it was posted by numerous other individuals and groups.
Mm-hmm.
Numerous lengthy, very aggravated conversations, and I
Yeah.
I stayed out of it.
I, it is, I feel like it is rare in conversations like that that I see the names of people who I otherwise see engaged in town government.
Yeah.
And that's always frustrating for me, because if you're going to have an opinion, let's have one while it's real easy to tear down the work of others.
Mm-hmm.
That is basically no effort. Building is harder. Um, but to each their own. Cap, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I, I can give you a little bit of details from that presentation if you'd like.
Uh, sure, I mean, yeah.
So that was, that was a three-building thing that, that included this building, right, the town hall? The town, so the current town hall will become the town meeting space, right?
Yeah.
With meeting spaces above and below. Um, the Ritter Memorial will stay the Ritter Memorial with its 65 addition, the boxy thing with the windows in the front. That'll be occupied by the school, uh, resource, resources, well, according to the plan. The resources that they're not able to have at the schools, right, um, various school programs that Massachusetts requires and whatnot. And then the annex, which is the new portion of the building, will have a basement, a 14-foot, ex, foot excavation for basement for PAC. They have specific height requirements and whatnot. And as well, the, um, it would be a two-story above grade. Um, so first story would be primarily the interactions on a daily basis. The, the most common citizen interactions can be on the first floor of the new building. And then the second floor will be the less interacted with, uh, other town function offices and um, and it was, it was, it was a very, uh, there was a lot of, a lot of joint discussion and communication and, and whatnot had because a lot of the end resulting spaces had been sat down and actually drawn up by various departments and department heads and, and, and individuals. I know that, um, the bu, building and, and, um, the building and planning, I believe, had, uh, some, some drawings, some sketches. Uh, conservation, I think, had some, um, there was, there was a lot of, uh, good input. And I think, I think the resulting was good. The final cost was like 2.6 million to renovate the town hall, 2 million to renovate the Ritter, and like 6 million, 6 million plus, almost 7 million, I think, for the new building, uh, attached to the Ritter, which brings us up to a, a subtotal of like 13, 14 million. And then, of course, there was all these other crappy things added onto it, and, and of course municipals have to pay prevailing wage. So I think the final price tag was 22-ish million dollars. So if we present that, that's what we're gonna be asking for town, yeah.
That's a lot less awful than, I'm gonna be honest, that's a lot less awful than I thought it would be. I was a
You haven't seen the Facebook yet.
Hmm, I've looked some at the Facebook, but that is, I was expecting a price tag double that.
Well, there's a whole lot of omissions on that too, by the way.
A lot of
It, it's a pretty number.
Got it. Okay, a little bit of wishful thinking going on.
No, no, no remediation was included. Um, yeah, we know, we know that's expensive.
Um, no remediation.
It's got, it's got parking for the town hall, and they're separated by like 300 feet. And I think there's gonna be like, uh, seven or eight spots near the building.
Hmm, I, I'm surprised remediation wasn't included, but I'm not an architect or planner or whoever does this.
In, in the pricing, in the pricing, in the, in the
Yeah. All right. Uh, I navigated away from our agenda. Someone's looking at it, they can say who is next. If not, I'll be there in one second.
Capital planning.
Yeah, capital planning, thank you. Um, we met last week? Yeah, last week, and, uh, just to, really it was to go over, maybe a couple of weeks ago. It was right before, uh, the interim town manager left. And so it would've been a couple of weeks ago. And we basically, um, went over his rec, cause you know, the capital planning committee makes a recommendation to the town manager. Town manager then puts forward the capital planning priorities. Taking the recommendations into account, but making some shifts. Um, there were some further, some of the voting we did was based on numbers that wound up not coming through totally accurately. That continues to be a point of frustration in capital planning and something we'd like to address and are trying to find a way to address, but it's hard. Getting accurate estimates. We've had multiple cases where, um, where frankly, the, we get an estimate and it's off by, uh, uh, I mean, a factor of 100% or more. Yeah, um, we're catching those quicker, like, like the departments are catching those quicker and going, oh, wait. And in this case, we could do some further talk that basically boiled down to, well, we kind of voted this assuming certain values. And there was some discussion and a vote, um, for some like re, repor, reprioritization. Now that that's out of the way, we can start looking at the five-year plan. We talked about that. We also need to give some time for our new town manager to get her feet under her and, um, get to know the town so that we are having that discussion collaboratively rather than us kind of just assuming things. And, but the intent is to keep working in that direction. All right, Economic Development Committee.
Uh, we have not met since our last meeting.
Izzy, Stormwater Task Force.
Uh, next meeting's next Thursday.
Cool. Monticic Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, we met last week. I forgot my notes at home, but I will say a couple of things I remember. Um, there was some hubbub about the new administration stopping federal funds, um, for MRPC and their various projects. Um, it seems as though it's been rescinded at this point. It's, I got an email this afternoon that they should be okay. Uh, but the MRPC is worried because if said cuts go through, that means no projects will be done on roads for towns or for, you know, any, anything the MRPC has their hand in. Uh, and they would also have to lay off, uh, many of their staff. Right now it's on the back burner, so we'll see. As of this afternoon, they're doing okay. Um, we were supposed to have a presentation from Senator Eldridge. Is that his name? Eldridge, I think. Um, that's been postponed till next month. He's going to be speaking about, um, Nishoba Valley and what they're doing there, uh, as far as the hospital and the new emergency room that they wanna build, a standalone emergency room. It's just an idea, but nothing is, uh, set in stone. And the only other thing I'm remembering is, uh, there is a new route, uh, for MART uh, because of Nishoba Valley closing, they are now offering free rides through June to Emerson Hospital. Um, they're only picking up in, I believe it's Ayer, Shirley and Harvard. Uh, but if there's anybody out there who needs a ride, doesn't wanna go all the way to Emerson, Ayer, Shirley and Harvard, you can find all the information on MART, um, and timing and everything, so that's about it.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, I hadn't thought about the federal funds affecting
I didn't think about it either until I got the email.
But there's a lot of federal transportation funds
Mm-hmm.
that we rely on to keep our roads. Could be interesting. All right, Monticic Joint Transportation Committee.
Uh, we are meeting this Wednesday.
Okay. Minutes approval.
I've got three sets for you there. Let me know if they don't open up correctly. Um, hoping they do. Should go directly to the Word document itself.
Yes. Okay, and that's at the bottom of our sharepoint.
I wasn't here for the December 9th one, so.
Okay, now you are, so as a reminder, you are allowed to vote. You say certainly choose to abstain.
Sure.
But you are, we are legally allowed to vote on minutes that we were, if we were not at the meeting.
I had not, I had not reviewed them. When I went in earlier, they, they weren't, they might, I think they went up late, so I didn't get a chance to review them.
If you're done reviewing, could you just give me a thumbs up so I know that you are comfortable, that you've reviewed? Whether or not you're comfortable is a different thing. That's a vote, but if you're done reviewing, give me an indicator, because I don't know where people are in that process.
I'm, I'm done reviewing.
I'm halfway through the first one.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Will you take a couple extra minutes for us to get through it now so the, a jet, so the minutes can be official and out there in the wild? The problem with long curly hair and a beard and mustache is they're kind of like Velcro. You've got hooks, you've got loops, and then I move, and I realize that there's something just stuck here.
I thought it was you couldn't keep the ladies, uh, I
It's a secondary problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. My, uh, I grew, when I grew my beard many years ago, many, many years ago, my wife hated it. She wasn't even my wife yet. And, um, then at one point I talked about shaving it, and she hated that too. I'm like, oh, you don't like change. I understand that. We can handle it. And then with the cancer, I lost the beard for a while, and yet, yeah, you know, she was right. I need a beard.
I saw what Mr. Allison looked like clean-shaven for the first time when I was delving back into some old, old, you know, like 20, 20 something.
Don't lie, that man was born with a beard.
It's been a long Caught me off guard.
Who's that? Turns out I'm one of the few people who looks older without his beard. Like beards, oh, people always go, oh, beards make you look old. No, 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 no. I gained 10 years like that. It's really impressive.
I like my beard. I've never had a beard, no?
Do it.
Yeah.
Join in the, the team.
All right. Let's see, we still have some people diligently reading. Got another thumbs up. Um, while the board is reading, I'm gonna move us, oh, oh, was that a
No, no, no.
Oh, no, while the board's reading, I'm gonna move us on to meeting schedule, because this is just something I say out loud that doesn't require the attention of others. Because I do wanna remind us that the board meets at 6:00 PM unless other, uh, 6:00 PM here at the town hall meeting room upstairs, unless otherwise specified. For example, if we're meeting on site somewhere, uh, see previously in the meeting. Um, upcoming meetings include February 24th and March 10th.
I do have the Mylar for the other end.
Oh, let's pass that and sign too while we're, and it gets some, and if you're watching at home, this is exciting, I know. One of my kids was asking me if planning board work is exciting, and I really was trying to explain it. Super depends on what you find exciting.
Yeah, it's a loaded question.
Yeah, I'm like, do I find it exciting? Yes. Does your mother find it exciting? The way she falls asleep when I explain it to her? I assume not. Um
Exciting is not the right word? Enriching?
Enri, uh, I like solving problems. I'm, I'm a real simple dude. If it's like, hey,
Exciting.
There's work to get done and, and you can maybe fix some things, I, I get, that, that keeps me awake happy.
Yeah.
Has anybody had a phone conversation with the new AI?
The new what?
I, I, I called someplace to make reservations and, and I had to interrupt them, and they wouldn't stop talking.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, I get that.
Yeah?
I get a lot of spam messages with that too, but I was before it was quite full AI.
I had no idea. I couldn't possibly have told the difference until I actually made the realization that
Wow.
Yep, no, it's
It's here. Kinda scary.
Yep. Okay, I am going, uh, I would encourage us, because we have a member who may or may not choose to excuse themselves. I'm gonna encourage us to do motions individually. For example, if there was a motion to approve the minutes for our December 9th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? And do we have to ask for an abstention for it to be official?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, cool. All right. Okay, um, move, uh, was there a motion to approve the minutes for our January 13th, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, that's unanimous. Um, and minutes approval for January 27th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there public comment? There's no public. Board comments, concerns?
Yep.
Oh, all three of them.
Ooh, wow!
I'll ju, I'll just go back to the whole, the ADU comment, or, um, conversations uh, and the, the implication that the, um, that the state is stepping in and taking, um, essentially taking control from, from the local governments. Um, and it's, you know, it's indicative of a government that's, it's, uh, that runs the people rather than the people running the government. If you look no further with the budget concerns that the, uh, well, the, the town as a whole, but certainly specific to the school funding, we have the ADUs that they're, you know, injecting themselves as well as the MBTA Communities Act, where the state is stepping in and with a cookie cutter approach, just applying these, these bylaws to all the, all the communities, specifically MBTA is 177 communities, but the ADU is every, every community in the state. So, um, the, um, I'm trying to read my notes. Um, but it, it comes down to, it's, it's convenient to, to refer to the state as coming in and making these mandates on us. But really what it is, is those who we have elected to govern us are, you know, have elected to govern us are, you know, not really responding at all to the sentiment of the voters. And it goes back to my comment where the, you know, the government is, is running us. And I feel as though they're really not responsive to the concerns of the electorate. And, you know, it goes with the, you know, specifically again with the, the MBTA Communities Act and the, the ADU as well as the overall funding and regulations that the state continually puts on the towns with like unfunded mandates. Yet, to me, from the outside looking in, it looks like the state, you know, does not work under the same financial constraints that the towns do. So the, you know, those who we have elected to represent us need to represent us better and bring the appropriate funding and support to the communities. That's it.
No, fair. I always find it an interesting point.
You know, I've been in a, worked in two communities that actually passed building moratoriums. They got so mad at the state that they're like, okay, this is what we can do.
I feel like it's easy to forget. A town budgets like a household budgets, has to. The federal government kind of by default has to, at least in the current format, I don't want to get into like really nitty gritty, can't budget like a house. It's a very different process. States are somewhere in between. I, I always wonder if that is a disconnect, if it's easy to forget. When you have more ability to slush and more ability to play, I wonder if that is one of the causes of disconnect? I have no idea. I just wish, I wish I knew what it was. I agree.
I don't think so because most of the politicians, the local, state and federal level, they all have families. They all know what it takes.
Yeah.
They might have a larger account, but they all have the same decisions. And they probably don't make the same crap-ass decisions for them and their families as they do for the rest of us.
Yeah. Probably outside what we can control as a local planning board, but I, no, point taken. And to that point, I am keeping my eye open for the next open, for the next office hours held by our state reps.
I plan on going. I think it's-
Maybe we can-
It's pretty soon. I don't want to say it's tomorrow.
I'll go.
I have emailed them as well. I did indicate-
I saw one come a couple of weeks ago. I just didn't have a chance. I was not in a position to respond to it and find a time then.
It's a week from tomorrow, the 18th. It's, it's, it's been posted like in the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, but next, next, on the 18th is Representative Scarsdale. I have it here as, I would confirm this, but at 11:30 AM at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, which I have gone before and I plan to go again. And I emailed her indicating the same.
Okay. If they're still taking people, I will email and try to get to that because this is a point I want to make. It's what I said before about, these things keep coming down from on high. And I think they probably work fine if you're a bigger municipality with more flexibility. They're eating up our limited time and resources, so we can't do other work that needs to get done. But I already spoke my piece on that.
And that, that speaks to my point of them controlling us and not us having the inability to control them. And I'll just use a specific example of the question one as it goes to the auditing. The citizens overwhelmingly voted to have the state auditor conduct an audit. And the, you know, the legislator is pushing back. And so there's a direct, you know, voice of the people saying, hey, this is what we would like. And they're going at whatever it's, maybe they're justified, maybe it's a technicality, what have you. But it's, that's not very responsive to the voice of the people, yet they have all these regulations like you indicated that force the towns to incur exorbitant, you know, costs and, you know, and I'll use a specific example, again, back to the schools. I did watch their most, well, I'm not sure. I watched a recent school committee meeting where Member Beardmore was very, very articulate and gave specific examples of pushback, which I agree with. And I sent him a quick email saying I appreciated his advocacy because I feel the same way. But, I mean, he used a specific example of how they've been working with the state delegation relative to the Chapter 70 funding and redoing that, that, that model. And with the latest legislative submissions, none of the contingency had signed on to any kind of bill revamping Chapter 70 funding recalculation. So it's, it's just super frustrating. And nothing, I've met, I've only specifically met Representative Scarsdale and a super nice, super nice lady. However, as I explained to her, my concern is exactly as I've stated and that there seems to be a bit of an echo chamber and there could probably be room for an alternative voice.
Fair. Mr. Allison.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait.
What's that?
I'm gonna wait. She had something she wanted.
Oh, mine's very quick. I just want to thank Ms. Aubrey who works for our Select Board. She's the admin there. She's handling the MMPO caucus this week. So thank you. I appreciate you, Annie. I hope people thank her more often because she's the best. That's it.
Yeah, Annie's cool.
The best.
Annie, Annie was a very good administrator for us.
Yes.
For a short period until she got taken by the town manager.
Logan's great too. Logan's great too.
She was great for helping onboard meetings. She was awesome.
And she was also a gift horse for bringing us, Logan.
Yeah.
So my, my, my comments, we talked about them at the beginning, the annual town meeting articles. And I think, I think, I think I was thinking about something else when it was mentioned, but I think somebody said something about within the four corners. We were told that we had to have it submitted by, before last meeting. Is that what he said? And is that what made you think?
Like February 1st.
It's ridiculous. I mean, oftentimes they don't even open the damn warrant until mid-February. And then they gave us like two or three weeks to submit articles.
Yeah, we were told right around the turn of the year, but that wasn't, no, where we normally have, sorry, I cut you off. I apologize. But where we normally have six months, it's like, by the way, ah, no.
Well, the planning board never would have sponsored this ADU bylaw. It's just totally contra, it's, it's a mandate. It's contrary to local planning and home rule.
You're making me nervous. We're getting closer to-
I know, I am getting closer.
That's a mobile mic, you know?
There's an electrical cord that's gonna stop me. I'll get electrocuted, but I won't fall the way down.
Mr. Allison, please, go on.
Okay, so within the four corners and that was, I think he was referring to the change in the ADU, right? So our bylaw that we put forward, so the state changes it on us, so now we're not within our own four corners. So is that gonna null and void our placeholder?
Maybe.
And, okay, so I think that was, I think you already brought that up. But so the acceptance of warrant articles is closed now? Is that, is that what I understand? It was closed February 1st?
It is closed to internal town, like town government.
So citizen petitions-
Citizen petitions.
Okay, that was, I was gonna just piss on one about that. That was not the case. Minutes for sit walk. Oh, if we do post a meeting for a sit walk, we're gonna have to have minutes for that too. So just another thing to think about.
Yep.
That's all I wrote down. So apparently that's all I had to say.
All right. Well, friends, oh, my computer might even turn on. That's it? That's all she wrote? So thank you for joining us for the February 10th, 2025 Lunenburg Planning Board meeting.
Adjournment?
Yeah, you gotta-
Oh, we have motion to adjourn, don't we?
So moved.
I said the words. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's, thank God, that's unanimous. Everyone, have a wonderful night. I love you all, but please find something more exciting to do with your time. Have a good night, everybody.